Okay, good evening everybody. Welcome to the Cohasset Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, December eighteenth at seven PM. Court one Hyland Ave., Selectmen's Office. I will call to order the meeting. Kevin?
Kevin McCarthy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Jack and Eily here.
Like everybody that's interested to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is our sixth Selectman. The first item on our agenda is public comment. If anybody is here in the audience to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, now is your time to do so. Okay. We don't have anybody. So next up is a change of license manager for the Red Lion Inn. Let me just get my paperwork together. If the people from the Red Lion Inn would like to come up, and I'm gonna ask each of you to, when you come up here, you can drag a chair up if you want to introduce yourself and tell us your address and for the record, and then we'll go from there. Who's presenting? Is it just Michael? Alex? Alright, welcome.
Do we all come up?
You don't all have to come up, but you all are welcome to come up if you'd like to. Certainly, Michael. So, welcome. If you could just, like I said, give us your name and address and then...
Home address?
Yeah, just for the record, please, thank you.
Okay, uh, my name is Alex Marconi, my home address is forty-four Channing Road Drive, Duxbury, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Michael Carlisle, twenty-nine Church Street, Cohasset, Mass.
Thanks.
Pierre Pratt, one Elan Road, Marblehead, Mass.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. So, Alex, do you wanna kinda get us up to speed and let us know what's going on particularly with the change of manager at the Red Lion Inn?
Sure, um, so as you know, we've taken over operations at the Red Lion. Um, we opened on November fourteenth. Business has been brisk. Very well received from the town. We're happy to be here and we're looking forward to a long and successful future in the town of Cohasset with the Red Lion Inn, Atlantica, the old Salt House.
Excuse me, who are your titles for public?
Sure, so I'm Alex Marconi, I'm one of the partners of Cohasset Hospitality Partners, um, which is myself, George McGoldrick at Denham Leavitts. Um, so we are here to transfer the liquor license from, uh, not, sorry, not transfer the liquor license, but change the manager from the current to Michael Carlisle. Um, the former manager of the license has resigned.
Okay. And, um, Michael Mick is formerly at Red Lion, I mean at Mr. Dooley's. So he's been in town for a long time. Does the board have any questions? No? Pretty easy. Mick, you wanna say anything? Busy?
Can you move down the street?
Give me a day off next week.
Next week? The twenty-fifth?
It's Christmas Day.
For four hours, right? Yeah, thank you. As is normal with change of managers, there's a, the police department conducts a background check. That came back with no issues noted. So, if anybody would like to either ask any more questions or make a motion?
Yeah, no questions, I just wanna congratulate the Hospitality Partners for what has been a successful opening. I know you've been there since the very beginning. And I think I speak for the community in saying that we wish the same success upon you at Hospitality Partners with you in charge of the license as we've seen through your prior experience, just around the corner.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So, I presume you're well aware of the liquor license laws and the state and local laws. Just a reminder, if there's a change of manager or assistant manager, be wary that we'd like to know when that occurs and then just give them a timeline according to the laws, which are necessary. And we wish you a lot of luck and I'm delighted, but keep that in mind with a, feet on the straight and narrow from the, when people change managers, it's nice to know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's just our, that's our song that we say at every liquor manager transfer or license transfer in particular with the liquor licenses in town is just keep an open communication. I know Mick certainly did at his former place and I, you know, so far so good with everything that you all are doing, so welcome.
I understand, thank you. Thank you all very much.
Just mention one other thing.
Yep.
Mention one other thing. If you're out, if you're open late and you're closing and there's people that are still there, from personal experience when I was working in the bar, late at night, if there's not a lot of people there, let the local police know, you know, call the police and let them know that there's people in the bar, more from a safety sake point of view, if you're cashing out, if it's a late night and it's a busy night, usually that's when the, nobody's there except for those cashing out. So, if that's the case, just let the, you know, let the police department know someone is in there so that they can kinda keep an eye on people that are leaving. That's my biggest concern. Waiters and waiters and managers leave, they'll, um, things happen.
John, Kevin? Yep, yep.
Can I ask, uh, plans for Harbor Inn and for Atlantica? Can you give us any kind of an update?
So, the Harbor Inn is open, we opened the Cove Restaurant there, um, what was the date, Pierre?
Uh, last week.
Last week?
Ten days ago.
Ten days ago.
Who's counting?
Right.
Menu for the Cove?
Yep, um...
It's a nice restaurant.
I don't wanna say basic, but, um, basic approachable food, um, at a very good price point, with the idea of attracting families. The restaurant exists now in the function space that overlooks the Brisa patio. And then once the weather allows, we'll be opening and expanding onto the Brisa, formerly known as Brisa patio.
And Atlantica still in the works?
It is, we have a goal of reopening in the spring of two thousand and nineteen. Everybody's aware, it does need a lot of physical improvements, particularly the roof is in very rough shape. I think we counted twenty-six leaks with the last rainstorm, which makes it a challenging environment to operate a business, as well as create some hazards for the patrons, 'cause the water dripping off the floor, it's wet. So it's difficult. The HVAC system also needs some updating and improvement. That proved challenging just in the last, excuse, the last few events we had there. Just sort of patching it together in order to get through. But we do have plans to repair both and be open for the spring.
And the Selectmen, just FYI, we received, um, in our emails, later, like at five o'clock or four o'clock today, a letter just letting us know formally that they were, they would be opening in the spring. And we can discuss that a little bit further when we go on to the renewable licenses for the properties.
Right.
What about the Salt House? The Salt House, is that the same?
It is, yeah, and they share a kitchen.
You're looking at the spring unit?
Yes, exactly. They share a kitchen and all the infrastructure that exists in the building supports both outlets, so when one's in rough shape, it affects both, unfortunately.
Okay. Any of the Selectmen wanna make a motion to approve the change of manager to Michael Carlisle at the Red Lion Inn?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, you as well.
So you're doing Christmas dinner at the Red Lion?
On Christmas Eve, you're welcome. We're open Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve, you're not gonna be Christmas Day.
We're not open.
Are any of you staying around for the seven-thirty agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. And I, you know, I approved this agenda and I look at it now and I think, what, why didn't I do that? 'Cause we, it, it, so, because it's something that the public theoretically might wanna make a comment on, I hesitate to move it to, but there is a request for extension of hours? That's...
At the Red Lion.
At the Red Lion for New Year's Eve.
You're tapped.
So, you feel okay about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Move that, move that we adjust the, uh, the agenda to accommodate the request for hours extension to current time, seven-ten. Second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Alright, so seven-ten, so let's just jump to that, just could summarize even though you just did.
I'm gonna speak to that.
Or Mick, or anybody?
Just while we're waiting, as we did last week at the other thing, does this affect any other businesses? So that we wanna make sure we start treating everybody equally. I think we're on time, I have it.
Yeah, so I wondered that too when we were looking at the agenda. I think this is, this is more of a specific request of a business. So last week we approved the hours for, what was it, Christmas Eve?
Right.
Or Sunday hours, for December twenty-third, 'cause that was a big day for all package stores. I think this is a little more of a targeted, I would hate to extend hours at every restaurant knowing...
Historically, it's been tied to an event. Historically, the Red Lion has had an event, like a New Year's Eve event.
So is there a New Year's Eve?
Well, that's, I mean, I'm just giving you the history, I don't know about the...
Yes, there is a wedding that we host at the, in the barn on that evening.
Okay.
And, you know, obviously they will be able to shield around at midnight and to do a little bit more dance than, than ending at one o'clock. Then the purpose is to stop to serve alcohol at one-thirty and get the guests back in there by four o'clock.
So basically, the request, uh, which is in our packet, is asking us to extend the hours for the Red Lion Inn until two AM on New Year's Eve. Any Selectmen have questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
Uh, question, will there be additional staff on New Year's Eve?
There will be staff appropriately for the, uh, for the guest count. It's not a big wedding.
Okay.
It's not a large wedding.
So it's not, it's not any more than what we know, the standard wedding, the size of the standard wedding? Some places would hire extra additional staff if it's a New Year's Eve or a, if it's a light time.
No, and we don't foresee anything special. I mean, it's a, like a regular wedding, just that it's looking to, uh, to extend a little bit our time.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
Uh, make a motion, we, uh...
Drop, uh, sorry.
I'm sorry, one comment, just because of the hour. I, I note that there's been a history of complaint, noise complaints from the butters under previous ownership. Um, and specifically, I believe there was some, uh, some actions taken by the previous board requesting that live entertainment or loud entertainment, especially during the late hours, attend to that, the potential that it disturbed the neighbors. Please be aware of that.
Yep.
Okay, that's it.
And we do, and, uh, in fact, you know, that's why we are ending in the barn just shortly after twelve to allow the guests, customer to come back at the Red Lion proper and to just continue a short after-party, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Paul, you wanna continue with your motion?
Uh, after we make a motion, we, uh, we request for extension of hours, um, at the Red Lion Inn for New Year's Eve, two thousand and eighteen until New Year's Day, uh, New Year's Day, two thousand and nineteen until two AM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that's, okay. Now, this is boring for those of you in the audience. We have some additional license renewals. They do include the properties owned by the Cohasset Harbor Group, so if they wanna hang on, they can. So, I don't know, do you wanna? Oh. Go ahead.
Uh, there's another one. So these are two thousand and eighteen license renewal. Uh, this is an update from the last, from the last agenda. I move to approve the renewal of the following all alcohol on-premise licenses for A and S Restaurant LLC doing business Atlantica, Cohasset Pub Corporation doing business as Mr. Dooley's Old Village Pub.
Just a reminder, this is the two thousand and nineteen annual licenses. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous?
Uh, make a motion to approve the renewal of the following in holder all alcohol on-premises licenses to calendar year two thousand and nineteen, Cohasset Sorrows Incorporated doing business Red Lion Inn, Cohasset Harbor Inn, LLC doing business Cohasset Harbor Inn.
You have a second?
Second, although I do have a question.
Yep.
Has the change of ownership beneficial? When if so, at what point will we take on the transfer?
My understanding is the ownership hasn't changed, that's right?
Who are we talking about?
The Red Lion Inn and Cohasset Harbor Inn.
Well, specifically looking, I would, what caught my eye was Cohasset Sorrows doing DPA Red Lion. And that's why I was asking the question.
They are still, and correct me if I'm wrong, they are still the owners. Um, there is a, a management agreement that allows for, I think it's Pierre, to sign on the applications for these kinds of licenses.
Okay.
Um, that information, I believe, was sent to us at least today from Jen this afternoon. It just confirmed some of that and had the management, or the management agreement is on file in this office. Is that right?
I believe we have one of them placed, yes.
Okay. I wanna get that clear myself then. Thank you for bringing it up, Steve. Who owns these three properties now then? Is there any change of ownership at all?
Then this is still under Gert Odeleider, has still owned the three places. We have a management agreement for now as a consultant who run the operations fully and totally. Uh, and Gert Odeleider did sign on myself to be able to renew the licenses for this year. The proper operational agreements should be signed any day of this week.
Did you say pre- purchase and sales agreement?
It's, it's an operating agreement, um, where essentially Cohasset Hospitality Partners is coming in to take over majority control of the properties.
Who is, I'm sorry?
Who is myself, George McGoldrick at Denham Leavitts.
And that's hospitality partners?
Correct, Cohasset Hospitality.
So that's a purchase and sales that you're gonna work on completing this week?
Correct. We've been working on it for...
I understand. So once you do the purchase and sales agreement though, you won't have taken it over until that's consummated, right?
Correct, well that...
You'll just sign the agreement and then you'll do a closing thirty days, sixty days?
And, and just to be clear, it's not, it's not a purchase and sale agreement necessarily. It's sort of, it's an operating agreement that joins our group with, with the current owner. But we will have operating control of the properties.
So, as we sit tonight, the previous owner, St. Ogilheid of, who continues to own all three properties?
Correct.
And right now, it, it being operated under, you're, you're working under a consultancy agreement with catering and hospitality.
Yes.
And that's in place, and so then next week you anticipate signing a purchase and sales agreement and then a closing will be done, usually the sixty days.
Well, it will be, it will be an operating agreement that essentially allows us to assume control of the properties completely, at which point will then be, there'll be another step with the licensing and which will...
Okay. So what you're anticipating then, next week is not a purchase of the business, but as an agreement where you'll take over operations, is that correct?
Correct.
With full authority?
Correct.
Will the ownership will still be with the previous owner?
Uh, yes, but not wholly.
Minority.
Correct.
Minority will be for Gert Odeleider.
At some point in the future, we should anticipate a license transfer.
Yeah, sometime in January or early February.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's really, that's what I was looking for. Okay.
Okay.
As you can imagine, it's been a little complicated.
Oh, no, 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 I appreciate that. I just wanted to make certain that I understood that, what the future would hold.
And it's a, it's, I'm not gonna...
Yeah, no, we're done.
Yep, yep, yep. Um, so we have a motion and a second on the, um, the in holder all alcohol licenses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next up.
Next, I move to approve the renewal of the following common victorial license, two thousand and nineteen calendar year, A and S Restaurants LLC doing business Atlantica, Cohasset Pub Corporation doing business as Mr. Dooley's Old Village Pub, H and I Donuts LLC, Dunkin' Donuts, French Memories, JJ's Dairy Hut, Olympus Grill, Maiden, Massachusetts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, although I'd correct Dunkin' Donuts, it's no longer Dunkin' Donuts, it's just Dunkin'.
Is that official, Kevin?
Well, their agreements are probably at Dunkin' Donuts, so what they've got there is okay.
There's marketing branding and then there's corporate language, right?
It's just the destruction of a great brand.
Thank you. All, you got a second? So all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, next up.
I move to approve the renewal of the following in holders common victorial license for the calendar year two thousand and nineteen, Cohasset Sorrows Incorporated doing business Red Lion Inn, Cohasset Harbor Inn LLC doing business Cohasset Harbor Inn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous?
I move to approve the renewal of the following local entertainment license, licenses for the calendar year two thousand and nineteen, A and S Restaurants LLC doing business Atlantica, Cohasset Pub Corporation doing business Mr. Dooley's Old Village Pub, Cohasset Harbor Inn LLC doing business Cohasset Harbor Inn, and Cohasset Sorrows Incorporated doing business at the Red Lion Inn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Okay. Carrying on, we'll just see two more.
I move to approve the renewal of the following state entertainment licenses for the calendar year two thousand and nineteen, A and S Restaurants LLC doing business Atlantica, Cohasset Harbor Inn doing business, LLC doing business Cohasset Harbor Inn, Cohasset Sorrows Incorporated doing business Red Lion Inn, Cohasset Pub Corporation doing business Mr. Dooley's Old Village Pub, South Shore Playhouse Associates doing business South Shore Music Circus, George A. Neely Post, one-one-eight, American Legion, RV LB Incorporated doing business Landis Highway, and Cohasset Golf Club.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. And then, let's, just before we jump into the next motion, um, we, um, we do have correspondence in our packet dated November twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, from, um, regarding the liquor license from Route Three A Pizza and Grill. The authorized representative of that business has voluntarily surrendered the liquor license issued to Route Three Pizza and Grill. So the action that we need to take is in the form of the motion that is written out, which is to not approve the renewal of the wine and malt on premises. So you wanna leave that motion?
Sure. I move to not approve the renewal of the following wine and malt on premises license. Three-A Pizza and Grill doing business is Three-A Pizza and Grill. The license holder surrendered the license to the town for the letter dated November twenty-three, two thousand and eighteen, and signed on November twenty-nine, two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, for that particular business, my understanding is it's just they're just not selling beer and wine anymore and the business carries on and is operational, um, among our pizza places. Okay, we are all set there.
So, the next item up on the agenda, the investment report for Paula and I, she's in the...
I'm sorry, guys, I can't hear Chris.
So the next item up is the investment report for Paula, which is, she's sick.
Okay.
Not over the pool, I hope.
Uh, no, no, no. There's something, there's some kind of, some kind of forty-eight hour virus circulating around the building. Use the, use the sand, hand sanitizer. So I'm gonna ask that you advance up the class at Harbor, I'm sorry, the class at a formal housing trust conversation. Pete Nash is here and Pierce is here. If you're okay.
Well, I would like, I would like to ask Paul here, it's only because I did reach out to Rob Jeffers about this being on the agenda and specifically told him it was gonna be on at seven fifty.
Yeah, and I talked to another member, they plan to be here.
They do plan to be here.
We gotta move this up.
Yeah, he was gonna be here about seven thirty, but, um, pretty much in the...
I'm waiting, I'm waiting to wait.
I think we need to wait.
I'm, yeah, Paula's not here, so I can't do that report, so how are you gonna fill the time?
No, no, I don't wanna, they're anxious.
You wanna move something else up?
We have to move something up. Minutes, minutes, uh, if we move up to the current time.
Good evening.
Take care.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
You know what, can you, do you mind holding on to that motion for just two seconds? Because, you know what, there's about thirty pieces of paper that we need to sign, so it's gonna be very boring television. But let us get, let us get these licenses signed and then we'll...
This is where we should be selling commercial break.
I know it. Duncan. Hold on, I'm just trying to...
I think this is all this is. It's like the money's been lost again.
Very special porn hustle colored paper. Did we have this many last week?
Yeah.
Yep. You had lots more last week.
It seemed like we had more, but...
Now we're done. Let's go.
I just give you two minutes.
Sorry, get to the big part.
That's why we go, huh? Somebody's blaring them, is that sound?
It's a health department.
These type ones, are we found a printed one? A printer version one?
I haven't heard that. Actually, those are different, those are from the... I should look into those too. Okay, I don't wanna be accused of not being able to multitask. Does anybody wanna make a motion to move the minutes up to seven twenty, seven thirty?
I make a motion, we, uh, approve, approve the minutes of ten, twelve, ten, two thousand and eighteen to current time.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of ten, twelve, ten, two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, the minutes are approved. So we'll take this investment report home, we'll study it, and then when we have it up again, we'll be able to move on.
If you want me to brief, if anyone has any questions, if I want to pull it back from meeting January, just let me know and I'll... Or you can even just send questions there specifically, if anyone has any questions.
And this is for the quarter that ended in September?
Correct.
Okay.
The quarter that's about to end.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Um, so we do have some time to kill, unfortunately, um...
I'm gonna give you an update?
This is, yeah, well, I was gonna say maybe we'll move town manager and selectmen update up as well and, um, and next time we do the minutes, I mean, the agenda, let's, let's make sure we tighten it up a bit so that we're not, this is the second time in a row we've had this...
Advanced, fast, fast, project.
Well, we've had something major enough shift such that we were sitting around and there's certain things that, you know, I think the public wanna weigh in on, I wanna, I don't wanna waste time.
Um, so, let me update you on a couple of things. First, the, we've successfully reached, uh, we've successfully found a new HR resources director who we introduced in January. The candidate is Meredith Johnson, she's the HR Director of Denham. She'll be joining us on January fourteenth. She's been with them about six years, she was their first HR Director. She was with the private sector for many years before that. Her company, which was with her a long time, was bought out, they changed her type of operations. So she went public. And done a great job in Denham, had really great reviews. We had a very good pool, but very exciting, and we had such a great... We took our time and we sort, we had three really good finalists, apart from the other big, we had to start with. Um, so, let me update you on a couple of things, um, first, the, uh, we've successfully reached, uh, uh, we've successfully found a new HR resources director who will be introduced in January, um, the candidate is Marion Johnson, she's the HR director of Denham, she'll be joining us on January fourteenth, she has, uh, she's been with them about six years, she was their first HR director, uh, she was with the private sector for many years before that, her company, which was with for a long time, was bought out, they changed her type operations, um, so she went public, and, uh, done a great job in Denham, had really great reviews, we had a very good pool, but very exciting, and we had such a great, we took our time and we sort, we had three really good finalists, apart from the other big, we had to start with, so she'll be starting on January fourteenth, and hope to have you, hope to have her in front of all of you, uh, on the, um, twenty second, it's a major application. We also, I think, are very close on a library director candidate, um, we had a pool there as well, and, uh, I don't have a name yet to release, 'cause we haven't actually hired anybody, but that process, we have a school division, a great corporation for library HSDs and staff, so we have a nice, uh, a nice process on that.
And staff has had interaction with some of the finalists?
Absolutely, so, I'm gonna, uh, fight that last meeting with, uh, the finalists, the most, the primary finalists was yesterday, so I'm just, I had to, with Paula being sick, I wanted to choose the acting HR director, I have to wait that closely. Um, we're gonna start, we started preliminary discussions, in fact, the, as you see, the door behind you has been transformed with a, with a window, so we're gonna be transforming that into usable space, whether or not that's the director, the office of the director, or just more meeting space, which is...
Little slide up place there, Steve, where they can feed, put the food in.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, doesn't, it doesn't have a doggy door?
Um, it may, it does need some ventilation though, 'cause there really isn't any ventilation.
Well, not necessarily.
Just break the window.
Break the window.
We have in there interrogation.
So, uh, so we'll see what we do with that, so, um, uh, the progress is, uh, uh, so we'll see, we'll see how we make that work, so, uh, so that, so, uh, Marion is gonna stay, our new HR director will be fully involved in the, in the HR, in the, uh, elder affairs, uh, director process, uh, Coral officially returns on January eighth, uh, which is the, so it's the week, the Friday of the week that Marion's going, so, and I've had conversations with Paul, and I've had conversations with the members of the elder affairs board and the staff, so we're moving on that as well, so, uh...
Could, could we just put, at least put in your mind to, to have some time for the board with Marion when she comes on board?
Yeah.
Alone to, to, to kinda call all of our goals and objectives, 'cause that's right now sort of in a few different places, and I wanna make sure we get them, you know, we all know them, we know what they are, but I wanna make sure they're classified into one place so that when we start to build the town manager review based on the goals, that we're able to do that, I'd love for her to literally jump into that sooner rather than later.
Sure.
Because I would've been happier if it had been done in September, but it ha, wasn't, so...
So, I, I, um, that's fine, well, actually, we'll certainly plug right, I was already on the phone with you yesterday, so even though she's in the middle of transition, it'll be working, she's, so I had a, I had a conversation with you yesterday, so, um, so that's coming along nicely, uh, in fact, she's actually fully, just beyond this OSHA transition stuff, uh, OSHA, the states adopted OSHA application to municipalities, which is something that I had not previously, uh, uh, affected, so, uh, it'll be an interesting transition, so, um, the, um, another big topic that we've been talking about, I know that we've talked here before, um, the discussions on regionalization, uh, of sewers with Situate and Hull is about to, to reach another big point, uh, the, the, uh, the analysis has shown that indeed it will be less expensive and more, and potentially have great environmental and economic benefits for all three communities if we can move this process forward, we'll have that a little more, uh, a little bigger conversation come January, if we wanna have maybe a, a separate night, public meeting, that various people can come and just, you know, the boys can all come and chat and talk about this, um, the sewer boys been involved, engaged heavily, we wanna have a more public meeting at all three towns, uh, in January, just to talk more about this, but it, it would be, you know, without going to super great depth, I'm talking about North Situate, which has no sewers, um, becoming sewered, uh, and, uh, and connections coming through Cohasset with a couple of primary areas, particularly the South Main Street area being a sewer priority area, uh, which would improve the health of the harbor, it would gra, greatly improve the, the, uh, the pollution that's coming down the Gulf River into the harbor, and benefit the town's plant directly by that, and also, there's a potential discuss going up three A, 'cause the state's gonna be doing work on three in a few years, and running a pipe up three and then cutting over, uh, will allow support for some of the, the business district there, which has been struggling a bit, there's been septic issues up on three A, so, it's an opportunity to be very channelized, and very targeted with the economic development, and also support some other environmentally sensitive areas in town, particularly the South Main Street area.
Has, has the sewer discussions, 'cause I know they've kind of had some fits and starts in terms of the regional conversation, but have they been involved with, has this been done in connection with either master plan or the harbor plan?
Yes, with, with, with...
So that this is all part of a central vision?
So, Pete's, Pete's been at the table on all of this, uh, and I, and I know that this has been a conversation I've had with some folks on the investment plan committee and the harbor committee as well, because they, it does click so, it, it, it does dovetail so importantly in the, both environmentally and economically, it, it, it plugs right into the harbor plan, and from a master plan perspective, that's the, one of the things, mathematically, I know, is, is where you looked at is the economic development piece, and three A is an area where you could do, you know, quality targeted development, um, again, keeping with Cohasset's vision, uh, and the, it's an area also with environmental issues, the, you know, the, the health, uh, our, our health agent has been up there multiple times, there's been challenges, as we know, uh, where Newland's Kitchen, hopefully, will be very successful for a long time, but that source, that, that septic system's had its challenges, uh, and we know that, I think, that, you know, given an opportunity, I think Avalon would love to plug in and pay, fellow brothers might wanna plug in and pay, so there's opportunities to pay for some of this opportu, you know, to pay for this, with state grants as well, but there's a real, there's a real opportunity, we think collectively, to, to get some, some state grants, both on a regionalization and both on economic development aspect, because, well, most certainly Situate has this as a targeted zone, they have some significant environmental issues in the north end of town, and there's also some economic development areas in, around the train station in the north end of town, they really like to take advantage of, and, uh, so, and we have to be between both of them, so Hull has capacity, they need to upgrade their plant, and so Cohasset's right in between, and we have some areas, some targeted areas, not, not everything, but, uh, so this is a conversation we'd like to pick up in January, so, um...
And, and sewer too, I, 'cause I reached out to them to see if they wanted to come and just give us kind of an update in general, but we'll do that in January, 'cause they couldn't do it, but they, uh, they have a new contractor starting January first?
Yes. Yes, actually, uh, Woodard and Curran will be taking over as the operator of the sewer, uh, plant, I just signed the contracts actually today, um, they want an RFP, they were having some challenges with sewers, um, and actually, Woodard and Curran has come and, come back with a better deal, and a, and a more comprehensive approach, which everyone was very pleased in, in fact, the two primary operators are gonna switch companies and go over to Woodard, so we'll have a seamless transition in terms of knowledge and operations, the two primary people at the plant will just flip companies and stay with the plant, so, um, so I know the sewer commission are very excited about this, and they did a lot of vetting, you know, uh, before they got to...
Is Woodard and Curran the current operator for the water?
Yes, they operate water as well, they also happen to operate Hull, and, and, you know, so they're, they've really greatly expanded their region presence, uh, so, I think, you know...
Well, that can only be good.
Uh, yes, so, we, we, yeah, I think there's a, I mean, waters who are different, that said, there's, there's some, you know, operation, there's some, the central management is similar, so it helps, I think, with us and with our ability to, you know, work collaboratively, so, uh, we'll see a little help with planning going back and forth, so, um, so that, that contract is, is in place as well, so, um, um, and there's a couple of other staff, uh, we're, we're in the process of trying to hire a couple more people, payroll clerk and another person on, um, the facility staff, um, we've also had some conversation with the schools about, uh, facilities, um, the, with, um, custodians and facilities, and finding better ways to collaborate, uh, across, or someone been talking about for, about, uh, January, we've just been having some really good, I think, conversations about moving forward on a lot of those topics, so, so those are a couple of big things, uh, on the list, and I do wanna talk about, uh, something involving, um, uh, energy assessment and, um, geothermal assessment for this building, but I, I'd probably be better if we did that during the town hall project conversation, 'cause I had a big conversation with some, uh, with Brian Host on the Capitol, which he's done a lot of groundwork, and, uh, we had a nice conversation today, and I think we have a really interesting opportunity here, we should take advantage of, I just like to bounce it off you, but it's probably better to pick that up when we get to the town hall cause, uh, project, so, otherwise, I think we're, we're, uh, happy holidays, merry Christmas, happy new year to everyone, I think we're gonna have a, uh, we've had a very successful year, um, though we're only halfway through the fiscal year, uh, and, uh, I'm, uh, very optimistic about the, the year we're having, a lot, gonna hit the ground running in January, a little bit of a break, oh, and one more, a couple of holiday news pieces, so we are gonna be closing on Christmas Eve, town hall will be closed on Christmas Eve, rather than just open a half day and then close again on Christmas Day, we discussed it internally, we'll close all day on Christmas Eve, so we'll be closed for those four days, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Christmas Day, but the town hall will be open all day on New Year's Eve, it's a big day, it's the last day of the year, business day of the year, so, anyone has any, you know, bills to pay or taxes, we'll be open on regular hours in the eight thirty and four thirty on, on New Year's Eve, so, regular hours, but we'll close on New Year's Day, and the, uh, the, uh, transfer station, the RTFO is closed on Christmas Day and open the day after, closed on New Year's Day, so, so, then I know, it's not only open on Tuesdays anyway, but it'll be open on that Wednesday, so...
It will be open Wednesday.
And, um, Christmas trees will start being collected and wreaths, uh, that next day, on Christmas, um, Christmas day, uh, post-Christmas day, uh, the twenty sixth, uh, if people are bringing back trees, please strip them of ornaments or tinsel or any of that stuff, bring them back as clean as possible, they do not recycle well if they have, uh, metal on them or lights, um, and wrapping paper can also be recycled, you can put that through the recycling, but again, please strip it down as much as you can to wrapping paper, no bows, no tape if at all possible, um, so, wrapping paper can be recycled so long as it's paper, uh, and of course, we take cardboard boxes, I'm sure people have piled up the cardboard boxes, we love cardboard boxes, again, just break them down, flatten them out, and we can tape these as well, so, uh, a one-stop shop for post-Christmas, rep, uh, post-Christmas, um, clean out, so, um...
Great.
Any questions of anything, like, you got, sounds, that, that's my topic.
No, when our first meeting after the New Year is the eighth, January eighth, right, um, 'cause it would be good, just, I think maybe one thing I would like is for us to consider doing just a budget update, just a, a fiscal year, kinda where we are operationally?
The eighth, correct. Yep. Yep.
Especially as we're launching then into the, you know, FY twenty budget preparation, which I know you're already launched into it, but those, then we're gonna be starting to talk about it.
But... Right, the twenty second will be the presentation of the draft budget with, uh, you know, the budget book, um...
So, I think it makes sense on the eighth to say, this is where we're trending, and boy, it, you know, looks like we, I mean, we've been budgeting really pretty well and pretty accurately, um...
So, where, where are... It's still, it's still worth an update, uh, I do have, um, I should have, I'll have to talk to Don about how close we'd get in terms of mid-years stuff by then, so...
Yep. I know, I, I, I get it, but...
No, no, look, it, it's, it was something, as of right now, we're trend...
Great, and you have five months worth, that's great.
At this point, we're trending nicely, things are good, um, and, uh, as we said, you know, new growth ended, it, very, very strong new growth year last year, and at this point, they essentially feel pretty confident, this year's looking pretty good too, um, I don't know how long that will continue, um, at this level, and, because I keep saying that, and we've had three years in a row now, pretty robust, so I, I, uh, and it's not some, you know, some, it's, it's a tear down rebuild, it's, it's, you know, there are new houses being, you know, popped in every once in a while, and there's upgraded business development, and a lot of it is, you know, tear down rebuilds, or big additions that people are putting on their homes, so, it's just... It's good for growth.
I was supposed to mess with kids in college.
Apparently, we're about to cover it for you.
Four of us aren't helping.
Last tour show family.
I'm trying to just see if we have to repeat this side of the house.
Okay, uh, town manager updates, Steve?
Uh, yeah.
You've been...
Well, I may wish for a...
I mean, uh, sorry, sorry, no, that's, that's actually demoted.
We have an announcement tonight.
Thank you.
Sorry, selectmen, you are a selectmen star, right?
Change of manager. The first thing I wanna do is take over town hall, and, uh...
No, I, um, I have, uh, I have no, no comment.
You're a paycheck. Jack?
Uh, so, the harbor committee, uh, as part of its obligation under this, uh, plan for the, the harbor plan, last night at the, uh, Willicott, uh, I thought it was a great meeting, uh, we saw a draft, how would I characterize this, a draft map of the harbor with, um, I'd say eighty percent assessment of issues and wants for the harbor area, we, we then went through a facilitation where, um, the folks ranked, ordered, uh, their priority issues for the harbor, and I think they're gonna collate all that and come up with, uh, with a list. So, we're getting there, I think that it, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I think we're like eight weeks out from having a draft, uh, planned on...
Yeah, I think in, uh, yeah, February, probably March, yeah, no, it was a good, it was, it was very similar to the master plan meetings last night, it was a nice, and, and people have been giving input all along the way anyway, so people are most certainly free to give additional input online, so...
Is there a, a mechanism to do that, the input?
Um, I will double check with, uh, with Pete, do we have a mechanism for soliciting additional comments on the harbor?
I would say, uh, number one would be contact me, uh, through email, uh, and I will direct communication with the, with the, uh, consultants, uh, and my, uh, my contacts on the website, uh, and then also, I've been pushing up today the PowerPoint, uh, that was drafted yesterday?
Yeah.
Uh, which actually was presented yesterday by Harriman and, uh, our consulting team at GEI, uh, regarding infrastructure surrounding the harbor, which Jack mentioned, uh, was actually posted on the town's website, so, if anybody wants to see that and to look at it, you know, that's the, uh, that would be the area, uh, and then also, uh, all the boards and the recommendations which Jack mentioned, uh, which, uh, all the citizens that pre, uh, were present last night, uh, voted on, uh, those will all, were all being scanned, uh, by our consultants at Harriman, and those will also be, uh, uh, put on the website as soon as possible.
Great, you anticipated my question, that's exactly what I wanted to know, thank you very much.
Okay. Yep, all information is on the website, and also, the biggest, uh, piece from the state is the notice to proceed, which was granted, uh, by the CZM, the coastal zone management, uh, which is a, uh, arm of the Department of Environmental Protection up at the state agen, it's, it's a state agency, and now, uh, the town of Cohasset has two years to submit a, uh, a plan, a harbor plan, hopefully, we're gonna do that in six months, uh, and keep everything kind of rolling forward, uh, which, you know, is within our contract with Harriman, our consultants, and with, uh, the contract that we have with the Massachusetts, uh, Co, Seaport Council, which granted us the funds to host the study.
Fabulous, okay.
Just so the people that are watching understand, we're gonna draft this report, draft, it gets reviewed a couple of times in public session, and then it gets submitted to the state, and there's, there's a whole process for that, so, even though the report's done, it's gonna take another additional at least six months to get s, approvals from the state, so, uh, the reason I'm saying this is, folks, if, if you have an interest, you should start focusing now, 'cause we're getting down to the, the end game here, we've got, you know, a couple of months where people can really...
Is there a point at which, I'll get to you in a sec, Pete, is there a point at which that you think we could be briefed as a board?
Sure, I mean, any, anytime you want, I...
Just kinda, I, I think we should do that, just as the plan is unfolding, as opposed to when it's done for the endorsement, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, that's a hundred percent, that, you know, that can be scheduled in advance, uh, with the team of Harriman, I think it's probably the best to, once a draft plan is put together, uh, Harriman will be able to come in and, uh, present, uh, the process, uh, to the board of selectmen, uh, and then as that plan evolves, uh, and the evolving as a plan matures and is reviewed, uh, the one criteria that is, uh, needed or is required prior to submission to the state is a vote, uh, of an adoption by the board of selectmen, so, I think you, you know, kind of leading into my, in, to, to, to answer your question, uh, Chairman, is that it's necessary to have a public hearing, uh, concerning the harbor plan?
Great.
By the, by the board of selectmen.
So, I will look at, to do something, um, squeeze it in between some of the warrant discussions in March?
Mm-hmm.
And then you could do maybe an adoption after we clear the warrant in April or May, depending on whether, whether things are...
Yeah, and, and I think this meeting was the first meeting where we had significant draft output of what's been worked on, so, you know, for me, it helps seeing it on, on a map, and we're, so that's what we have, we have a draft, and I encourage everybody to go up and take a look and see what's there.
Great.
Um, and then, tangential to this is, I, I know the selectmen understand, but a, a good portion of the harbor is in Situate, and Chris has made the introduction to the Situate town manager and the Situate selectmen to start talking about some kind of a management agreement between Cohasset and Situate, uh, we had a meeting with, uh, the two gentlemen who are the heads of the Situate Harbor...
Waterways.
Waterways Commission, and, uh, that went very, very well, I think Situate's very, very open to putting a, a plan together, it turns out, they actually have a management plan with Marshfield, and that's gone smoothly, and so, uh, I believe Chris is gonna use that as a model for, for us, and the big issue for us is, is we're starting to plan on spending some significant money in the harbor, you know, a lot of the harbor is in Situate, how do we reconcile that, so, we've, you know, started that discussion, and that's, we'll probably resolve along with the, the harbor plan, and, you know, maybe we'll see something by next summer.
One of the things that we talked about when we started the harbor study is the, um, the harbor committee, and how it's structured in our bylaws, and that likely there will be a, some kind of a harbor committee or harbor management committee, or waterways, or whatever it might be, is that something that we would be able to take action on at this town meeting?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
So, this is, we met for the first time, uh, these folks have been, just so you know, Situate's had a waterways commission for fifteen years, and they've been working extremely hard over the last fifteen years, and there's a lot to be learned there, and they're very open to sharing with us how they do that, so this was really preliminary, you know, every, the, the selectmen are gonna be actively involved in how this happens, but we've, we've gotta collect some information to get a sense of how this is all gonna work.
But I, I theoretically would imagine that the harbor plan, whatever that is, aside from the whole Situate potential, uh, would include some kind of direction as to what kind of a... as to what kind of a oversight committee or whatever it might be.
Just your nameplate.
But, but I, oh, is it mine?
Yeah.
Oh, really? How'd that happen?
So, the, the short answer is maybe, I mean, it'll be some general.
But probably not this time. Thanks, Rob.
I mean, I'll tell you how, my, my impression is, is the, the harbor committee that's there now is working on the harbor plan. It may or may not be the right kind of committee to be applying forward, it is gonna be initiated in the harbor plan.
Yep.
I, I just don't know how detailed it's gonna be when we're finally done, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure.
No, I agree, I, and I, and again, I think that'll be part of the conversation you all have as you go through this.
Right.
Um, and again, I, it, it, as Jack says, it's gonna take a little time to sort through this stuff.
Yep, yep, I just wanna make sure that it's, it's on, it's on the radar, but it's probably not anything we can take.
Oh, it's definitely on the way, it's on the, it's on the radar. It's a very big radar screen.
And I'm just giving everybody a heads up, so, you know, everybody knows that this is starting to happen.
Awesome, thank you.
So a quick question, on the southern border of Situate, is there similar shared waterways there?
Yes.
The North River.
North and South River.
Down river, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, a, apart from in Hummer Rock, you know, slightly split away.
Marshfield.
Yeah, yeah.
So they, they're, they're a lot more intertwined than we are, cause they operate it, they, together. Situate really has no engagement at all in our harbor at this point, though they are talking about oysters and things in, in the area and up and, up north of the breakwater, um. So, but I, I mean, so, you know, when, when, when Marshfield and Situate talk about dredging, it helps them both. If we talk about dredging, Situate doesn't really care, I mean, they don't wanna spend any money to dredge what effectively is Cohasset's access.
I mean, maybe very helpful, look at that as a, as an option, you know, how do they do it?
Right, no, so we do, so as Jack pointed, we did, we did get the air graph, draft agreement, I don't, you know, it's a great template, I, you know, I don't know that. Look, if they wanna start splitting costs with us to help maintain it, I'm all in favor of that, I don't know that.
That's our goal.
I don't know that they're that excited about that, but I, I think the most important thing is jurisdiction, I mean, I, I also think at the same time, we're gonna be at the expense. You know, there should be jurisdictional issues, you know, managing the area from a public safety and, and a planning sense and all that. And, and I think it's a lot of opportunities to collaborate. The line was drawn four hundred years ago, this was wilderness.
Old colony line.
The old colony line, that hasn't been wilderness in a very long time, so.
And, and, you know, so there, you, you know, there are some issues, I mean, one of their biggest issue is, is that, uh, the Outer Harbor of Cohasset is the only place along the Situate coastline where they can actually, uh, harvest, uh, oysters and do shellfish harvesting, you know, and the state sets the area, right? So Situate would like some accommodations and they'd like to share that area. It turns out you have to use an auction to actually allocate out the spaces, and you, you actually have to put a map together, I'm, I'm not an expert on this, this is, this is an hour conversation, it's dumb and dumb, that's okay.
Take away, yeah, yeah.
But you actually have to block out the areas and then it's auction for how people get access. So it's, you know, it's not trivial, and we'll have to figure out how to do it, but it was a great conversation, the Situate folks are very experienced and they're open to cooperate.
And again, so this dovetails really importantly into the conversation I just had to talk about with sewers, cause keeping that area healthy environmentally is critical to these kinds of aquaculture opportunities. Which also, by the way, plays right into the Seaport Economic Commission, which is improving healthy economic development. And this, you know, oysters are about as low intensity as you, and they clean the water, right? So if there's something that can be done there, it could really be, be proverbial, I always hate to say this term, win-win, for everybody, uh, from an environmental and you can offer that.
Oysters.
Yeah, I mean.
A lot of people are putting oysters in and leaving them there, they're not harvesting them, they're just using them as a way to clean the water.
Yeah.
And then the final conversation we had is sharing, you know, we're talking about dredging, we talked about, the state has pushed, Tim and I have gone to a couple of state meetings, and they've really pushed us hard to regionalize some kind of a dredging program. The problem is, is some people use vacuums to dredge and other people use scoops, we're better off using a scoop and some of the other towns. The other problem we have is we're in Norfolk County and at Plymouth County, but I think that can all get worked out, we'll figure it out.
It's a big issue, man.
Cause nothing can be just easy.
Yeah, yeah, we should just succeed.
Yeah. We found that.
From our eye county.
Um.
Co- yeah, the coast.
I, I'm not gonna go there, I, I'm not gonna even talk about that issue, but.
Yeah, uh, Paul, any selectman comment, moving right along?
Um, yeah, the main thing was, there was the, uh, Safe Harbors meeting on Thursday, which discussed the opioid, uh, concern and problems in the south shore, it was quite a good, uh, group that was there. Um, director of the E R, uh, one of the state reps who's head of the, um, psychiatric and mental health, uh, commission at the state level. A member in town who's, um, has a family who was involved with dealing with drug addiction, um, and State Representative Joe Manskin was there, so it was, I thought it was well attended, uh, quite, uh, informative. I thought it was quite helpful.
It, it was incredible, um, it really was an incredible program. I, I will say that the, um, Rep. Garlic, who I think represents Needham, she's the one on the m- mental health, um, commission or whatever at the state. She commented on how impressed she was and frankly shocked at the turnout, um, on behalf of the selectmen and elected officials in gen- or of town officials in general, and she said she can't wait to go back to her community and brag about how, how engaged we, we as a community are. So I think that spoke really well to everybody's efforts on this and, and Safe Harbor and Christine Murphy for just really kicking everybody into gear, so.
Um, along that line, one of the theme of that was in our backyard, so to speak, of how localized it can be. Correct me if I'm wrong on the statistic, but it was, cause it shocked me, was is that, um, that Chris had given us that there was, is that in the last five years Cohasset has lost twenty-six citizens to opioid overdose, that's, that's, that's an overdose in passing away. Uh, for a town our size, talk about it being real for your backyard, I thought that was an astounding statistic, I, I, I did not think that it was that high. And the data for just three surrounding towns where, I can't remember it exactly, so I'm not gonna give it publicly, but it was even larger. But Cohasset alone has lost twenty-six citizens in five years, and as Chris had said, it's the equivalent of one-third of a class, an average class in our high school now, gone, died. And so, uh, it's something really that we need to all realize how s- how pervasive this disease, this plague is, and how this can only be done if we increase awareness and come together as a community in a multiple, uh, w- uh, number of fronts to address this. So here is everybody, even in the board, everybody in town to get much more active on this, so it's a serious plague on our lives.
Anything else, Ken, um, Paul, can I do the end of?
Um, that's all I had on this.
No, I'm fine.
Selectman comment, I, I don't have anything other than to wish everybody, um, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and enjoy, uh, the break, I certainly intend to do so. Uh, cause we've been pretty fast paced for quite some time, so, and Chris, thank you, and to the staff as well, um. Okay, so now, how about that, we were able to bring us right back, and now we're behind five minutes. Um, we are gonna discuss Cohasset Affordable Housing Trust. So, um, we had a presentation from the, um, Affordable Housing Steering Committee, I think at the end of September. Um, and we have discussed, um, in different formo- forums, um, some of the opportunities we might have to, um, increase our affordable housing. Um, so I am gonna turn it over to these guys, but we are gonna also, um, discuss where we stand with the Coh- Cohasset Affordable Housing Trust and what our next actions may be on that, so.
So, uh, thank you, so I was just doing a little digging, uh, and I did find that the town of Cohasset, uh, adopted an affordable housing trust. And this goes back to two thousand and eight, I believe.
Yep.
Uh, at town meeting, and, uh, this has really been talked about for a long time in Cohasset. Uh, and I found documentation, uh, there's a few members of the community, uh, that have been able to kinda drop documents off in my office to try to fill me in uh, with the kind of the history, uh, so this kind of does go back to two thousand and three, uh, with the master plan back, uh, that was completed. Uh, and so in two thousand and six, uh, the town of Cohasset looks like afford, uh, hired an affordable housing consultant to create a plan. Uh, which I, I could not actually find a copy of, uh, however, that doesn't matter. Uh, in two thousand and eight, a housing trust was passed at town meeting. And, uh, there was a few members that were actually appointed to that committee. However, uh, in my knowledge, reviewing some of the board of selectmen minutes, uh, going back to March of two thousand and seven, uh, through two thousand and nine. It seemed like there was a couple of projects, there's a lot of things talked about, uh, and then there was, there was really kind of, um, no projects really, I would, I would say undertaken by the, the committee, so.
Can I, do you mind if I just stop you for two seconds?
Yep.
Steve, do you remember, was there, was there some action at town meeting?
They tried to fund it.
They tried to fund it, through CPC or through the budget?
And it didn't pass. No, I think they were just looking for, through the budget, if I recall.
Okay, okay, thanks.
It was Tom Callahan and a couple of people.
Yep, I remember vaguely, but I don't remember the details, hang on, Clark, do you?
Excuse me, yeah, I was on that committee as co-chair, and we were, we made a, I think it was modest request of CPC funds for the, for the trust. Um, that the CPC, uh, officers at the time, uh, weren't interested in, um, supporting, but it didn't come up at, on the floor of town meetings.
Town, because CPC didn't endorse it.
That's right. And, and then the other point, the housing consultant was hired, um, to create a housing production plan, but Avalon, uh, with the ten percent increase in two hundred and twenty total units. Uh, got us over the ten percent affordability, so a housing production plan wasn't needed.
Great, good, good info, thank you.
So, uh, thank you, Clark, which brings us to two thousand and eighteen. Uh, and so with the development of the master plan, uh, the town of Cohasset received funding from M A P C through grant opportunities. Um, to develop a, uh, housing production plan, the H P P, uh, and, uh, that is being worked on currently. Uh, and hopefully the next couple, you know, month or two, I can have a consultant from M A P C, Alexis Smith, uh, come down and give the board of selectmen an update. Uh, but I can, uh, state that they're really, uh, they, Alexis has met with myself on multiple occasions, al- along with the committee members. Uh, we're looking at, you know, the development of the plan, right now, they're in the research mode, pulling together a lot of data, um, a lot of comparison communities. At our last meeting, we, we isolated a couple of communities in the area, in the region, uh, on the south shore, but also compared the, comparison communities, uh, within the Bay State. Uh, so to kinda compare Cohasset to, uh, looking at, you know, what communities the, uh, school district here looks at for comparison communities, and also just, uh, as M A, within the M A P C region. So things are moving forward, uh, quite swiftly with, uh, the plan, however.
I just have a question, do you mind?
Yes.
Uh, I, yeah, just because I wanna, I'll forget about it if I, if I don't.
Yeah.
Um, the, the housing production plan, is that real data driven, or are they actually trying to come up with recommendations for development?
So.
Like, so in other words, you need X number of affordable housing units, here is something that might work in your community based on.
Both.
Schools, population, everything.
Both. Uh, number one, there hap- because of the work that's being done with M A P C through the master plan, and the funds were granted to us through M A P C, which is called the Technical Assistance, uh, Fund. Which is, which is written in every year to the state budget, and those, those funds are usually about two point five billion dollars. And they support studies like this, uh, and it's divvied out within to each nine regional planning agencies. Uh, M A P C has taken a lot of the data that was produced, uh, at the master plan events concerning housing, a lot of committee input. Uh, and then also meeting with the, the Housing Steering Committee here, uh, to start to, you know, get that process moving. So it is data driven, but also from a quantitative method, however, from a qualitative method, M A P C does look at the, the function, the form of development here at Cohasset. And they identify which tools, uh, within the toolbox of towns can use, uh, to spur, you know, housing, uh, that would fit into the community at the scale of each community within the Bay State, if that answers.
And the thing I was saying is we're all, so the M A P C is gonna be meeting like with, at the senior center and.
Yep.
Correct.
And get some qualitative, uh, you know, feedback as well, it's not just numbers or things.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, and just today from a qualitative method, I was able to put in, uh, Taffy, uh.
Mark Nigle.
Mark Nigle, thank you so much, uh, put her in contact with our, with the, the consulting team at M A P C, just to kind of bridge those gaps. Uh, and then in the new year, we will be rolling out a little bit more of a P R to collect that data. Uh, I've been working with Paul Kiersten, Alexis Smith, who is a consultant, uh, from M A P C, to, uh, go down to the senior center on coffee Mondays and to talk to the seniors of the, of Cohasset. I think the big thing about planning is to get out, uh, to the community events to try to introduce these ideas. Uh, at the last farmer's market, uh, earlier October, Alexis and I set up a booth, uh, and we tried to solicit information and comments from, uh, Cohasset residents. Uh, to try to bring, uh, the plan to residents, not, you know, have the residents come to us. Uh, and so, uh, that's where that, the plan, that development of the, the, the housing production plan kinda sits right now.
Okay.
Uh, but tonight, I think we're here to talk about the Affordable Housing Trust, which was developed in two thousand and eight, uh, and as Clark mentioned earlier. Uh, and to try to reinvigorate, I would say, uh, that, that board, uh, senior committee. Uh, and so, uh, and I, and I kinda printed out everyone on the copy. And I just wanna tell you first, kinda note on the membership, uh, that there will be seven board of trustees appointed, uh, and the torch trees were appointed by you, the board of selectmen. And so it'll include one member of the board of selectmen, um, and are designated as public agents for the purposes, uh, of the constitution of the Commonwealth. Uh, the initial, this, it kinda states in here, the initial terms will be staggered once to two years, uh, all terms thereafter shall be for two years. Uh, and so that is the membership makeup of the Affordable Housing Committee, uh, as stated within this bylaw.
Trust, trust, I'm sorry.
Uh, I also wanna point out on this, on, uh, page two, all the way down to the bottom, uh, just to, uh, look at it, uh, at, uh, C. Uh, all the expenditures for this trust will be overseen by the board of selectmen and shall be approved by the board of selectmen. Uh, I thought that would be very interesting, um, uh, just a, you know, a quick point to make.
Yeah, that was the way we set up our, we have a policy that we set up and we put that in our policy as well, that the board of selectmen approves the funds, right?
It's, it, it's part of the, uh, part of the bylaws, we, we're responsible for real property, it's all by the town.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm. And then, uh, on page three, all the way down to the bottom, G six, uh, it says after the time of expiration of five years. Uh, so it's past five years, however, I, to my knowledge, has been no, uh, motion to terminate the, uh, the trust to this point.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, even though it's, it's, uh, there's no appointees or membership.
Did you, did you see what you ever had appointees to this, did we ever make up?
So. Yes.
There, there, there were.
Yes, there was.
There were, no, they don't longer.
There were trustees.
So let me just understand the structure, so the structure hasn't sunsetted or anything, so it exists. Um, the terms are only two years, so even the people who were on it, and there definitely were some people on it, as Clark mentioned, um, those terms have expired. So right now, there's seven empty spaces on an entity that exists called the Affordable Housing Trust.
Correct.
Um, and then they, they act as like an independent board, we would need to potentially give them funds.
Correct.
If they had a pool of, I'm gonna make up a number, okay, just, just play with me, if they had half a million dollars and there was an opportunity to spend three hundred thousand dollars of it. The five hundred thousand dollars is given to them through town meeting action.
Correct.
And they wanna spend three hundred, that would have to be approved u- by a majority vote of the trust and then the board of selectmen.
Correct. Of the board of selectmen, correct.
Okay.
That's the way I understand, read, read the bylaws.
I think, and one of the memories needs to be one of these.
Right. That, I, I see.
And just a, just a quick, uh, just a note of information, on March two thousand and, March second, two thousand and nine, um, the board of selectmen motioned that Tom Callahan, Clark Brewer, Steve, uh, Lucet, Mary, excuse my, 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 uh, English, Greek. Greek.
Yep.
Uh, uh, Jim Hamlet, uh, Hamilton, um, Marjorie Charles, uh, were all appointed to the committee. Uh, so those are the original members, the trust, I'm sorry.
The trust.
That's all right, we, we'll get you.
Uh, uh, back in two thousand and nine. Uh, and then I just, you know, just in my experience, my professional experience working at the town of Hanover, I did staff the Hanover, the Hanover, um, Housing Trust. And, uh, I can just say that I felt it was very positive, uh, that the trust did take CPC money, uh, and they did use it for seed money uh, to develop some of these projects, uh, and just to, uh, give a few examples, the, the one big example I will grant to the board is, uh, Cardinal Cushing. Cardinal Cushing, uh, a few years ago in two thousand and thirteen, uh, redeveloped the Kennedy Building. The Kennedy Building was a gift to the, uh, to the, to the Cardinal Cushing School by the Kennedy family, uh, and it was a school administration building. Uh, two thousand and thirteen, uh, the town, uh, working with, uh, the Cardinal Cushing and the planning officer of urban affairs was able to redevelop that entire building using, uh, leveraging mass historical grants, uh, mass housing money, uh, to really, to, to really make a thirteen billion dollar project work financially. Uh, the town of Coh- Hanover put forth about three hundred and thirty thousand. The Town Hall over put forth about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, give or take, to that project. And so that was just an example that I was part of, that I'm more than happy to talk to you about and our members of the committee that I took part in. And if anyone would be interested in touring that project, I'm more than happy to set up a site visit. Because I was really, I really thought that that was a really good project, a good example of how a town works with a nonprofit and a kind of a quality, you know, and in this case, the Arts, the Boston, the Arts Diocese of Boston to create affordable housing opportunities.
Steve?
The, the mechanism that was created two and a half, three years ago with respect to the steering committee effectively takes that, that genesis and places it in front of the steering committee for the purposes of defining for ourselves, for the community, what our opportunities are with respect to affordable housing, so we can control our own destiny. So for example, the, the project that you're describing would be one that we would expect or we would hope that the, the steering committee would promote, advocate, and bring to the trust. The trust, with, whether there's seed money or not, the trust would then be engaged with administering in a fiduciary fashion the funding, the administration, the completion of such a project, right? So effectively, you're trying to staff two different entities. And from our perspective, well, at least from my perspective, there are skill sets that are also complementary, but possibly very different, trustee versus the committee. I would, you know, in, in, in one respect, I would, I would think that the steering committee would be the, the loud and, and, and insistent voice, right?
The advocate.
The advocate, exactly, the advocate. Bringing a, a range of producible ideas to the trust. The trust, of course, would ideally, the trustees would then be selecting those which, with which we have the resources to produce or could, could meet highest and best use coordination with, with the town's long-term objectives. In other words, fulfilling the concept of controlling our own destiny. The town, I dare say, has strong memories, not all of them pleasant, being a subject of a four EB developer. And there's some question as to whether or not they really want to go through that again with respect to fulfillment or simply advance what's there with respect to fulfillment. So that, outfitting the trust with, with a level of expertise and sobriety becomes a big deal for us. And I, I, you know, I, I'd like to see, I, I, I'd love to see a range of people step forward to, to present themselves here, so, I'm sorry. I, I see all raising, so I'm finished.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so a couple of quick things. I think you're right, you know, the diversity of a board is oftentimes key for success. A few years back, we worked on a couple of boards. There's a great article written by New York Magazine, The New Yorker Magazine, about what makes you the trust and how to, how to fill it, how to have the different aspects of abilities on the trust or a nonprofit, which I think it kind of fits that. I'll see if I can dig it up. It was The New Yorker Magazine, maybe four or five years ago. But it listed someone who has fiduciary responsibility, somebody who has public relations, somebody who has accounting, somebody who is totally independent in all of these. And then those were invested solidly into what, what the trust or the nonprofit is looking for. The other thing I looked at is, on the, on page three, it looks like you can accept a lot of monies from lots of places, right?
Correct.
So potentially, if the town wanted to, if members of the town wanted to donate money to the trust, that would be a nonprofit example of donation.
As an endowment.
So you can do an endowment, you can do, you can deliver properties, you can deliver anything else to the trust as a, as a citizen or from, also from several aspects, whether it's grants or loans or other things that.
Correct, and right under B, you say, it says gifts, grants, donations, contributions, or other cash payments to the trust for the purposes of providing low, moderate income housing.
So, so this is, this gives a lot of flexibility for basically donations or, you know, if someone who is wanting to gift something to the trust as well, so just to bring that.
What we've also seen is in a lot of the grants or things that were, were applied, you could apply for it, they ask, is there a, a trust? Because that's where they would, where they would expect the money.
Fiduciary agent, yeah.
Yeah, and it's like, so that, that does come up in a lot of the, the monies that could come from outside of the town.
So paragraph B, section fourteen is something that most people don't, don't know, and that is, you know, we're talking about affordable housing. And we're talking about the, the trust being the, the governing body of the funds. The trust actually is more than just, you know, borrowing money to build a house. The trust becomes an entity upon itself, you know, which can borrow money, loan money, invest money, and collect dividends on that money and be able to loan it out to the residents of the town for home improvements and, and things of that nature. So, you know, in the past, trying to set up a trust, where we went to the CPC to try and get money and then we had to convince other people why. I think that at this point in the town's history with an affordable trust, I think it would be in the best interest of the town to execute the trust by putting a nominal amount of money, say five thousand dollars into out of the general fund, not go to other communities to get money from them. Select trustees and execute the trust as an, as an entity. Once that entity is established as five thousand dollars or, or a thousand dollars in the account, then the provisions in this plan can be executed by the Affordable Housing Steering Committee. But we have talked to several agencies in the state that have these funds available, whether they're grants or loans, that would be available to the trust if it was set up. So we've already talked to people that said, well, if the trust isn't set up, we can't, you know.
Give you this grant loan. So what is, what is the corporate entity of the trust? Is it an independent 501(c)(3) or something similar to that? And it's not under the auspices of the town?
No, it's, it is under the auspices of the town.
So the town manages the investments?
No, it's under paragraph G on page three. It, 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 in effect becomes, the trust in effect becomes a governmental body of the town. So it, it is a governing body.
But it's a, as a, as a result of that, it's a non-taxable entity.
Right.
Right. So.
But, but it would be.
There's a special section of state law that allows these to be created, so.
But, but like for investment purposes, that, that, that would be managed by whoever else manages any of the town's funds?
You're asking who the follow-on investor would be. I thi- I believe that that would actually be commanded, or not commanded, directed by the treasurer collector.
That's what, that's what I thought, as opposed to the trustees.
The trustees, I, I, I believe the trustees can set direction, but there is probably, I would think there is guideline. You might, are we hearing from Paula tonight?
No.
So if, if, were Paula here, she'd point out that based upon the duration of investment, there are restrictions on the types of funds and the amount of risk they can take. And I believe if these are, these funds are intended to be deployed in a, in a reasonably near term, there would be a low-risk investment requirement. But ultimately, it comes back to the same thing. You, you do have a trust, we do have an entity, we have an entity that can accept funds. There's only one thing missing, there's no unholy. And so we, we, we do need to outfit it with trustees. And I would say that at the very least, we would, I would think that we would be looking for folks with skills in a variety of areas. I think Paul delineated a few of them effectively, but since there are seven slots and one of them is already determined to be an elected official, then those slots could include folks with a range of, a range of skills from construction or real estate development to the law, to finance and accounting or accounting. Public, public relations skills always. I think the, the underlying piece of it, no matter what, regardless of your professional background, is common sense and a, a compass that, a compass that steers you to making clear-headed decisions for the benefit of, well frankly, for the benefit of the community, so. And I'm waiting here for the resumes to arrive along with the Christmas cards, so let's get it going.
So I, I think, so I, I think that our message tonight is that, yes, we need to populate this committee. We are, we're.
Trust.
Trust, thank you. Um.
Please start.
I know, I know, it's your fault. That we are looking for, you know, people that are level-headed, clear-thinking and open-minded and have some skills to bear. And we, and, you know, and I encourage all of you who are, you know, in the trenches in municipal committees and business to reach out to your friends and, and try to help identify people and encourage them to apply for it. The one thing that I don't want to lose sight of is what your committee's doing, which is.
Right.
You know, it's one thing to have this trust and all ready to roll, but unless we have a real thoughtful plan, ideas, opportunities understood and laid out by the community, you know, it's, it's all for naught almost. So I want to make sure that we, I know we talked about a very specific action item in the fall with respect to eight oh eight Jerusalem. Now that's something that I look at. My, my real question with that was, we don't really need, we don't need money on that, do we?
You need a trust set up.
But you do need a trust.
You need a trust to be set up and funded.
So yes, you did need some money.
Okay.
It's like with Habitat, they're gonna be looking for the town to put some money, you know, not, not nowhere near the, the full cost of it. There's a source, a source for that, those funds would be an application to CPC as an example, yeah.
Right. So, so just, just let me play this a little bit, and it's not on the agenda, so I don't want to get too, too deep on it. But, I mean, we, the town owns the land. Would, if, if we were to, if we, if that were our contribution to some units, let's say that was it. No cash yet, and maybe we do need cash and that's fine, but, but if it were just the land, do we have to have CPC reimburse the town for the lien on the property? That, you know what I mean? Like, how does that work?
I, I think we need to have Paul in the room to talk through some of that stuff.
Okay, all right, let's, let's cue that up.
So we're, we're, we're planning to have that conversation in January.
Okay.
About, you know, next steps and all of that.
Because that is a project that has been identified, that seems to have a lot of positive feelings towards it. And I want to make sure we, we start talking about how to make it happen and as we build this trust.
So I have a question. So if the town owns a piece of property, can the town through the board of selectmen transfer that piece of property to the trust?
Not necessarily, it depends. So there are some pieces of land that have to go through town meeting, and there's some pieces of land that don't have to go through town meeting. It depends on whether they're required. Tax title properties are different than properties the town's owned historically or been given. So it does depend on what the history of the property was.
What a tax title property.
I think we have to research a little bit more, but typically, tax titles run differently. Because they weren't, the town never bought them.
Right.
The town got them.
Right.
But a pri- a private contribution could go to the trust.
Yeah.
Private contribution of land.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, I, I mean, the, the, the bylaws are fairly specific about any land transfer. I, I don't know if that would apply to a tax titled land, which is likely exposed in a different way.
Yep.
Yep.
So that's something we're looking at. So my, my, I'm gathering, so if anyone is interested in applying, should go to the town's website. And there was an, an application for a committee, just check off Affordable Housing Trust. If it's not there, I think it's online, it says other, and writing the Affordable Housing Trust.
Could, could I ask, could I ask that we put a link to the committee application and say seeking, you know, applications for, and we're probably gonna be seeking other committee applications and put it on the homepage? Just because it's a little unwieldy.
Could we, because we, we, one thing is, Steve, I remember a few months ago, we, we were talking with Affordable Housing. We had a meeting like this and we were gonna fill in the committee and we haven't. Yet anyway, let me cut to the chase of it. Why don't we, I'd like to see us more aggressively fill this committee.
Well, a couple of months back.
This trust, I mean.
Right, a couple of months back, the, the conversation had come up about the trust, but there were still some open seats on the steering committee, which have, I think, have since been filled.
I think you're full or close to it, right?
Close to it. Okay, so, so what I'm, what I'm getting at is.
So there's still a position open?
I think we have one open.
Okay, do you?
Are we full with Melissa now?
We, we should be full, we have.
Okay, sorry, we are.
That's what I thought, so.
Attendance is a different thing.
Please let me know if I'm wrong. I, I was under the impression that that committee was set.
No, that is, so that is, my, my point is, is let's go ahead and fill this trust. Let us go ahead and fill these positions and do it through our normal process of put out the word and through the Mariner and Sullivan that we're looking for applications. And then when we get them and set a date, when we're gonna go ahead and do this. Because I think that there's a lot of value in having this trust populated, as Steve was saying. It'll create a life unto itself and, and an energy behind all of this affordable housing activity by having those, that, that, the trust populated. They'll become further advocates. So it's just, we, we need to, Steve said, you have some people, when you knock on the door, be there, you know? So I would like to see us put out more aggressively, you know, that we're looking for it, as we have in the past, and then set a date on February first or January, whatever it is, we're gonna make appointments, start making appointments. And I think to the tone of the board, we should, you know, not necessarily look to have to fill everyone, even if we have the application list was satisfied, it has the correct talent in it. So not to be shy to fill out three and keep looking until we get what we want. But I really would like to see us move forward and actually start to populate this because I think it's holding efforts back not to. So could we set some dates on that or?
Yeah, so I think that's the one thing where we haven't decided, right? Is that we're gonna, we're get, it's out there, should we say that our first meeting in February, we'll, we'll interview candidates?
And then during the month of January, you'll, we'll circulate the rest of the applications to all of you and you can.
Set the applications? I mean, I'd be happy to back it up to the meeting before that if we think we can actually do it. But given the holidays and by the time everybody gets their feet, it's January third.
Well, we could set it deadline for, or, or first cut, maybe like mid-month, so that you can start looking around the twenty second.
So what meeting is that, is that the January?
So we have a meeting on the eighth and the twenty second.
So let's, let's have it out there then, that on January twenty second, we're gonna be making appointments and that we're encouraging people to fill out their applications between now and then. Hopefully, the Mariner or others will put this word out the way they have in the past. We can socialize it if we need to, and let's start to fill it up. I think we'll see this dynamic will, will, will increase and move forward much, much more better.
So why don't we say the January fifteenth for the first cut? That way you can all have the application list, the week in advance of the meeting and look at stuff and then give some direction as to how you want to go forward.
So in other words.
Send some interviews or something.
Set an application deadline for January fifteenth, that way they can go out in the packets before the twenty second meeting?
And then put on there, though, that the twenty second is where we're gonna actually start making appointments, okay? So we agreed on that? We don't need to vote on that, right?
No, no. Yep, hold on.
Member versus the selectman.
Yes, we got that.
Yeah.
Yep, Clark, hang on. Clark had his hand up, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what, one thing for, I think, everyone to consider would be, once the trust is established and in place and running is to sunset the, the committee, because I think, you know, that, that would be the, the mission takers at that, at that.
Well, absolutely not.
No, and I, that's, sorry, we're all like, bleh. But that, that's, that's sort of what I was driving at a few minutes ago. Like, I, I really think that the trustees have a different responsibility than the committee, which I think is making efforts to make recommendations and ideas and bring things forward. And it's really the trustees acting in a very different manner. Now, I would imagine there are people on the Affordable Housing Steering Committee that probably would have some interest in it, and, you know, they would have to most likely.
Apply.
Step down and apply or, or apply and we'll see what shakes out.
The concept behind the steering committee was to be a lasting and standing function to advocate for affordable housing on an ongoing basis, recognizing that the trustees are not in a position to do so because it compromises their, their basic fiduciary duty. It's as simple as that.
Yes, and I remember, Steve, we had that discussion two or three years ago. We thrashed that all out, so I agree with you.
When we did the steering committee.
We, we, no, just the way Steve said it, we set this up, I think it was, this was already done.
They're different functions.
No, we are, we went through this already.
I think we're on the same page on that. Yeah, Jack?
So I just want to circle back to Diane's first comment, which was, you know, what's, what's the framework for affordable housing in town? What are we gonna be doing? What are, what's our plan for the next five years? What are our general goals for the next ten years for affordable housing? Now, my guess is, is that's probably the steering committee's, you know.
They're working on a plan.
Because I think, I think, I think to be successful in town and to get support of all the citizens, having that frame put together and, and helping everybody understand what it is you're trying to do with affordable housing in town is gonna be really important to the success of the whole program and getting the trust funded. So, you know, i- i- is it addressed in the master plan?
It's gonna be addressed in the housing production plan.
Okay, so it's not, it's.
It's in the housing production plan, which is gonna be a state-approved plan. And that's gonna really kind of outline what the goals are for the town to create a for. for the town to create affordable housing.
But when you say goals, are you, uh, uh, it's, i- is it, I mean, how, the, the master, my guess is the master plan's gonna lay out areas that could potentially be used as.
Correct.
Okay. And then, this, this M A P C study's gonna talk about, in general, what kind of, what kind of needs we have in town?
Needs, what kind of strategies can be applied to co-hasset to implement affordable housing units? Now, this is just, there's, obviously, there's units, which is a great thing, and everyone thinks a forty B, ten percent. However, it's at, at the public policy level, in this trust, you can do a lot of other different things. First down, you know, first-time home buyers buy down. You know, um, and that, and that, you know, veterans buy down, uh, which could be Affordable Housing Trust issue. Uh, you know, staff, municipal staff, you know, buying into a house in co-hasset, which would allow the town to invest in workers, uh, such as myself. Uh, but, uh.
Might have to refuse yourself to some of these discussions.
And I get, and that's great, and I get that, you know, but, for example, let's say, uh, you know, we can only buy five houses in town for this kind of a need, and we have fifty people that wanna buy homes. If we don't have a plan in place that addresses the need of fifty versus, you know, the ability to do five, I don't think we're getting there. I don't think we're really addressing the issue of affordable housing. That's why I want to make sure that we're getting the big picture down, and that it really addresses all these needs. And, you know, I mean, for example, you know, we, we've got the state-funded housing over on Elm Street. For a lot of reasons, that's not flexible in addressing some of the other needs we has, have as a community. So, you know, I'm just expecting that your plan's gonna address a lot of these other, it's gonna quantify what the needs really are, and then address them with.
I think there's also, yeah, there's a realistic nature of it, is that we can, we will identify all of the needs. It doesn't mean that we're gonna have the means to, to meet all of them, and that's a priority that you, you guys would need to set.
I have to figure it out, yep.
Which ones do we wanna, wanna address, because we're not gonna be able to address all of them.
Steve?
Well, no, I, I, I was just to bring that up. Some of what you, you're asking for with respect to data has been, um, has been addressed or is in the process of being addressed by the steering committee. I, I, and so, there, there are certain questions you would ask and say, well, what's our need ten years from now? And it's, yes, well, that's a bit of a, uh, a guess and a toss of the dart. Based upon the data that we have, that, um, what we expect could reasonably happen within town, I believe the steering committee has, has already developed a, um, a reasonable estimation on what our needs are, um, or could be. Pete brings up a separate point, which is, there's, you know, and Diane has, has coined it in the past by saying, there's affordable housing, big A, and then there's affordable housing as a little a, uh, small a, and that really gets to the, um, it starts to ask questions about what we wanna be as a community.
Right.
And those are, to me, equally important, and it was one of the driving factors in establishing the steering committee. Because those are also questions that we would hope that the steering committee would, would desperately, uh, attempt to address or, or tackle. The, the, the notion, you know, people kind of chuckle about it, but the notion of, of putting together a, um, a subsidy for a municipal employee is not bizarre at all. If you wonder from time to time what empathy a municipal employee has for the tax rate, ask them if they live here. Because that empathy rises with, you know, with the, with the, uh, participation in paying their taxes. And so, that's a pretty big deal. But likewise, you also find a, a certain pride in your community, right? It's amazing what happens when you live in the same town you work in. You really, you really pay attention to the work that you do. Much, uh, you know, much more so in the, in fact that your neighbors are looking at you on a daily basis. And that's, you know, is that something that we value?
Well, so.
Hold on, I get Paul's next.
It's, it's just, it's, it's an, it's a rhetorical question, but it's exactly the, i- it's the, exactly the subject matter that I would hope that the steering committee would embrace along with what we need to do to meet state regulations.
Yep, so, two quick things. Um, Ed, you mentioned about the, um, you know, affordable housing for people who live in a given area that wanna work there. They do all the time for colleges, for professors, as well as for a lot of the, um, you know, the upper level, but also a lot of the, uh, workers in a given college will have housing that's subsidized by the university, so that's pretty common. Um, the other thing is, to get back to the, the, um, the trust, um, there's seven spots that are available. And I looked at it, it looks like there's one and two-year terms, but there's no limit on it, so it looks like, I'd be worried that someone's on for two years and they're off, and they kind of lose their, you know, the edge of the knife saying, you know, this is how we're, we're doing, and they get stepped off. But it doesn't look to be, um, term limit, so if someone gets on there, and they enjoy it and they like it, although it says a two-year term, that's two-year term, but I, I would bet that you'll probably get some people that are willing to stick around longer than two years. And honestly, you know, learning curve for a, a trust is, is difficult, and once you get in there and you really know what you're doing, um, that may be, um, extended. So, that, that one item there, which I think is important, is that anyone's willing to sign up for it and put the time in that, although it's a two-year term, I'm sure that if you enjoy it, that's extendable, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go to Jack then. I just, I wanna wrap up soon, and then I'll take any last-minute comments from the audience.
So, I just wanna circle back to this whole idea of the vision for affordable housing in town. You know, I know there are folks on your committee that have a really strong understanding of what, what could be done in town. That vision has to be shared, that's all. You know, it has, there has to be a clear vision shared by all in town. And it, it, you know, and I think it has to, that, that whole conversation has to happen pretty fast. Because I think folks are gonna fight one-off projects. I, I don't think they're gonna get behind one-offs. I, I just, politically, I don't think it's gonna work, and, and I really think we need an affordable housing policy and a vision for affordable housing that's just shared by all. You know, everybody gets it, and then we can all work in the same direction to get it done.
Doesn't mean unanimous, but it means, I have to clarify that on just about every topic.
I, and I do think that's our, our, our goal with the Housing Production Plan. I do think we have a very good handle on the big A. Like, we know we're gonna be twenty-two house units short come this next, you know, census. We have a good idea of how many will be short, you know, ten years from now. But that's just units. The actual, okay, what are the needs of the community, and which ones do we wanna focus on with getting those twenty-two units? That's what really comes out of the Housing Production Plan.
Yeah, cause the number of units is supply, and what we need is demand, right?
Yeah, and the demand might be much higher than that, but that twenty-two is just to keep you out of the forty B and things, things like that. And not everything has to be the town spending money. I mean, there are, like, as you mentioned, you know, you have Avalon, they could expand, or things like that. Doesn't have to necessarily cost us a dime. Uh, and those are the types of things I would expect that the Affordable Housing Committee would bring to you as ideas. But the overall overarching plan comes from, okay, we're gonna do some of it this way, we'll do some of it on the onesie twosies, we'll do it, some of it is gonna be like the historical societies and things like that, and here's our overall plan to make sure that we, at the very minimum, meet the forty B over the next decade. But here's some other demands that we might wanna consider, you know, addressing. So, that's what we would plan on putting in front of you.
Nicely stated, thanks. Um, Paul, did you have something to say?
So, just, uh, real quickly, since it was, um, primarily supposed to be Housing Trust tonight, um, I just wanted to make sure, cause we, we've asked this question several times, and we, we really need to have, um, action taken before May. Uh, one is, um, assigning new trustees, obviously, and we, we need an article and a warrant for funding. Um, and, and I would recommend something like five thousand dollars for funding of that article. And the reason being is that, when you read paragraph B in the fourteen or fifteen, fifteen, um, uh, paragraphs that are under that, what, which you're basically looking at is, this is the mechanism the town's been missing for the last ten or twelve years. Because, what, you know, CPC is just a source of funding, but everyone thinks we go there for a hundred percent of funding for, for housing, but it's not the case. So, with your example of, of, um, uh, the housing unit on Jerusalem, eight oh eight, as an example, um, the, the town would use the trust as a mechanism to be able to transfer that land, and the trust would work with Habitat for Humanity, for instance, to convert that to real property.
As a developing agent.
And to develop it. The more important part is, is that the trust would ensure that the property has been deeded affordably. We had missed that mechanism several times here in the town of Cohasset with other Habitat homes that were built. The mechanism was not there for us to make sure that the property was deeded. So, there are Habitat homes in Cohasset that were not deeded.
And that has to happen through the trust. That's the mechanism for.
There would be the governing body to ensure that would happen.
Okay.
Right, so, that's all part of these provisions that are in B, so that's the thing that we're missing, is we, we've had committees and we've had, um, you know, uh, well-intentioned people, but, um, if there isn't a governing body monitoring what's, what's there, you know, what's on the list that's gonna come up in six years from now to make sure it's converted, um, this would be the mechanism for that.
Right.
If, if people in town, um, want to downsize or convert their home to a two-family, they had an opportunity for some sort of tax credit, um, and they were willing to deed their property, the trust would be the mechanism to do that in. So, that's, it's, it's not just building an affordable house for, you know, ten units somewhere. It's a mechanism for all the residents in town to be able to go to and, and, and interact to have transactions take place.
Okay. Alright, I, thank you, everybody. So, basically, we're, uh, we're looking for applications for the Affordable Housing Trust. We will accept them. Uh, it's a short window, so I encourage all of you to, you know, tell your friends and neighbors, um, with relevant skills. Uh, we'd like them in hand by January fifteenth, so we can make some appointments on January twenty-second. And we will discuss, we're heading right into FY twenty budget cycle, so we will discuss, um, a line item for that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Excellent. You're gonna be the chairman?
Yeah, you're just appointed.
Yeah, I, I appointed you chairman. I don't, I don't actually have that authority.
He's got dogs, though.
Alright.
Chris, Chris becomes town chancellor.
So, whatever. So, we are now gonna pivot, um, and I, thank you for patience, we were running way ahead. Now, we're behind, and I apologize for that, um, to discuss kind of where we're at with the Town Hall project. And one of the first things I wanted to do was to review the goals that we set last year and just see if those remain, or whether we're gonna affirm those, whether there's something else we need to, to consider. Tracy, can you, did we get those up on the, are they on the OneDrive? I don't know. So, last year, um.
Were they in that package?
No, they were not. They were not. They were like a couple of months ago, um. But they are on the OneDrive. Hang on one second. So, I'm just gonna read you what we did, um. So, our objectives, and there was a few more than four, but, um, or maybe there wasn't. So, uh, Town Hall. Hold on. Kind of read it, but, uh, yeah. I can't print anything from here.
You just, you can give it to me, and I'll print it.
Can't, I don't have wifi. Town Hall should be a modern, functional and flexible space for the next fifty years.
Sorry, where do you, where, forgive me.
It's in the, um, on the OneDrive.
I, thank you, but that's a pretty great spot, so.
It's under, um, Selectmen Shared Files in a folder called Town Hall Project.
Thank you.
And for some reason, I can't unzoom it, and I made it too big. So, I'm just, let me just read them, and then you guys can, can try to find them. Town Hall should be a modern, flexi- functional and flexible space for the next fifty years. The historical restoration of the original Town Hall should be for civic uses.
That was one of my goals.
Yeah.
Civic and cultural.
Civic and cultural, right. So, we, we would have to add that. Um, the project should be budgeted with efficiency in mind and fit in the capital plan that the town will accept. Uh, that's interesting. So.
That didn't work out.
The structure itself should be on the sited plot in abutting lands. Um. Those were our goals. Town Hall shall be located on the Town Commons with the same. No, we didn't. With the similar footprint. The Selectmen adopt the Thrac Committee and its current members, and add two additional members appointed by the Selectmen. The town manager is charged with developing a financing plan for the project, consistent with the ten-year capital plan. So, I think what I would like the board to think about are those main four goals. Modern, functional, flexible space for the next fifty years. I don't know that any of us would have any
Disagreement?
Disagreement with that. The historical restoration of the original Town Hall should be for civic and cultural uses. The project should be budgeted with efficiency in mind and fit in the capital plan that the town, that the town will accept.
Capital plan, huh?
And a capital plan.
And.
I think we need to talk about that sentence. And the structure itself should be on the sited plot in abutting lands. With the same, the footprint discussion, when we did it, was basically that it was the old Town Hall in an attached additional building.
Is that what that says?
It says.
Is that what number four says?
Number four says the structure itself should be on the sited plot and abutting lands.
I'm not sure what that means. Abutting lands means it could be over and another.
It was, i- at the time, it arose because there, there is property abutting here, which we, we could, um, seek to acquire.
Okay.
So, i- i- that's, it's as simple as that.
Hold on, I'm gonna get us, I'm gonna, I'm gonna narrow this down. Sorry. I know, because there was actually, let me go to the actual voted motions.
Diane, depending on your people.
I can't find that file.
I know.
It's.
Technology, we're just too old, I think. Um, this is, these are the votes. That, I'm gonna read the actual votes. Motion by Selectman Garmer, that the Bo- Board of Selectmen adopts a Town Hall renovation committee as the Selectmen's committee, rename it to the Town Hall Building Committee, affirm the work they have done, and charge them with continuing to move the project forward consistent with the goals the board will adopt. So, that is the establishment of the Town Hall Building Committee, so let's put that on hold for a second.
Yeah, I got it.
Town manager's charged with developing a financing plan that is underway, or done. Motion by Selectman Kennedy, that the Board of Selectmen is committed to presenting to town meeting a Town Hall Building Project at annual town meeting. Here are the five objectives, I'm sorry. Motion by Selectman McCarthy, that the Town Hall should be a safe, functional, flexible and accessible space, which will meet the needs of Cohasset's committee structure and administrative staff for the next several decades. Uh, vote was unanimous. The board discussed the location of Town Hall. Motion by Selectman Garmer, that the Town Hall should remain on the Town Common at forty-one Highland Ave, seconded by Selectman Caniley. Vote was four one. Motion by Selectman Kennedy, that the town values the eighteen fifty-seven historic structure and its auditorium space, and seeks to restore and preserve it for future generations as a center of civic, cultural and community activities, seconded by Selectman McCarthy. Vote was unanimous. Motion by Selectman Garmer, that the town seeks community partners in the restoration of the eighteen fifty-seven historic structure and utilization of the historic auditorium, including financial assistance from private foundations, grants and citizens, seconded by McCarthy. The vote was unanimous. And, um, motion by Selectman Kennedy, that the budget for Town Hall will be reasonable, prudent and consistent with the ten-year capital plan. Those were the, the overarching five goals. So, putting aside the, the actual committee structure, cause I wanna flesh that out a little more. What we have is, the Town Hall should remain on the Town Common at forty-one Highland Ave. That the eighteen fifty-seven historic structure should be restored and preserved for future generations for civic, cultural and community activities. That we seek community partners in the restoration of the historic structure, and that we will budget the project, um, in a reasonable and prudent manner.
That, in their, the first motion that Kevin had put forward was really focusing on what you expect the outcome to be for the administrative space. Safe, functional, flexible, accessible.
Yep. Safe, functional, so.
Will meet the needs of the committee structures and so on.
Yep, yep, in the building, right. So, anybody have any thoughts about how best to affirm or add to these objectives from last year? I mean, I.
Well, have your thoughts changed?
So, let's just start one at a time. Alright, let's start with number one.
Safe, functional, flexible and accessible space, meeting the needs of Cohasset's committee structure and administrative staff for the next several decades. I'm good.
If we just take, uh, take out those scriptures and put in the opposite, it's, it's pretty good?
Good. Previous.
We got a motion to affirm that mo- that objective. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
On. Location. The town should remain on the Town Common at forty-one Highland Ave.
Yes.
Yeah. No, I'm not, I'm not re-litigating that one. Um.
I make a motion that we affirm that the Town Hall, when renovated, will be on the same
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next one is the value of the eighteen fifty-seven historic structure and its auditorium space, and seeks to restore and preserve it for future generations as a center of civic, cultural and community activities.
Move to affirm. Move to affirm item three.
There's a second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is the town seeks community partners in the restoration of the eighteen fifty-seven historic structure and utilization of the historic auditorium, including financial assistance from private foundations and citizens.
Um, do we wanna expand that, i- that sounds very local, do we wanna try to get patents of the statewide, or are we open to anything?
So I think when we talked about it last year, I I think we can add some language in here. I think we, when we discussed private foundations, we were talking about a blanket group of foundations, and, um, we also applied to the state, um, so I think we should probably include public and private foundations.
Yeah, let's expand that, um, 'cause we spent a lot of time after that vote working on the state, so.
Right.
Let's make it a formal, because that, not only by making it a part of the objective, but it gets promoted that way, and people get aware of it.
You can put in, uh.
From public and private funding sources?
Yes.
Just leave it at that?
Yeah. By the way, did we, did, um, did you post the, uh, application that we did for the town hall grant? Remember, we talked about it last meeting?
Um, I haven't, I don't know, I I haven't, I don't know if we've been able to give it up on OneDrive, so if, before tonight, I'll print it, I can.
Oh, okay, that'd be great, thank you.
So.
I do, I do have.
Okay.
Okay, so, do you wanna try to redo that motion? Does anybody have anything additional to add to that? Right.
Right, so the town seeks, uh, a move that we as the Board of Selectmen affirm that the town seeks community partners in the restoration of the eighteen fifty-seven historic structure and utilization of the historic auditorium, including financial assistance from public and private sources, and if so, and also citizens.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, the next one is, shouldn't even be a motion, because it's just obvious, right? That the budget for town hall will be reasonable, prudent, and consistent with the ten-year capital plan.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that, yeah?
Yes.
Good, thanks.
Uh, it's, uh, uh, yes, it's obvious, it's common sense, et cetera, but eventually, um, what, while it was our objective to do so, it, uh, it did not meet with acceptance at the ballot box. And so, I'm not certain how would we express it, but our opinion of reasonable and prudent, and the townspeople's opinion of reasonable and prudent, were different with respect to the plan.
Right.
Alright, and this may take more time than any of us wanted originally, and it may actually, I I have, I'm not forecasting this, but it may come in phases. But ultimately, um, I think we have to be more attuned to what the townspeople think is reasonable and prudent. And from that perspective, the focus on a capital plan, the capital plan is important, but the focus on the financing plan is equally important. So you wanna add financing and ten-year capital plan?
Well, let, let me tell you what my little issue is with the, consistent with the ten-year capital plan, and Sam, feel free to wave your hand if you wanna weigh in on this, I mean, what does that really mean? You know what I mean, like, what is consistent with a ten-year capital plan?
It means it's not a lump in the snake. It means that we didn't swallow it and try to stuff it in over other priorities. It means that we actually are looking at it saying, yep, we can absorb that on the balance sheet without major disruption to other requirements.
Okay, so how do you wanna put that?
I would rather, and I, of course, agree that we need to do that, I wanna say it such that it's not like, 'cause, well, last year, frankly, we didn't have the ten-year capital plan, so it was like, oh, it fits.
So, so we could say, we could say, and fits within the ten-year capital plan.
That makes more sense.
Okay, so that, that's good, but I also think the fiscal plan is.
No, I.
Okay.
Absolutely, let's, I'll.
I just was gonna say, we had sort of a ten-year capital plan, and as every year goes on, it gets better and better.
Right.
But when you looked at the ten-year capital plan, and you looked at the timing of the payment for the work we wanted to do on town hall, you came, at least I did, I came to the conclusion that you couldn't fund this through operational debt without cutting off school roofs, things that you knew were coming up, that you had to do to preserve your property, and the only way to really finance it was excluded debt. Um, and that, I think that part of it went against the grain of a lot of the voters. It's the simplest way I can put it. So maybe what we need to be able to do is either figure out how to fund it within the operational budget, um, maybe getting more money into the capital stabilization fund than the current debt roll-off formula. Um, but I don't think you wanna do it in such a way that you're gonna sit there and say, well, we can't get new, we can't get replacement vehicles, we can't do the school roofs, we can't do this, can't do that, because we don't have the money to do it.
Of course. Yeah. So, so I think what we wanna do is tweak this language enough so that what we're saying is that the the budget, that the 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 number, the big number, is reasonable and prudent, and obviously, that's something we all have to feel comfortable with and and sell, if you will, but, and that it is, and that reasonable and prudent also has a lot to do with the fu- the, our understanding of the long-range financing or finances of the town and how to best finance. I don't wanna, I don't wanna make the decisions right now, whether we're gonna go operational budget, capital budget, some combination therein, but I think we need to make a statement that says we are gonna make, we're gonna find a reasonable and prudent number, and we are gonna have the financing.
And I I totally agree with what you're saying, and again, we're trying to create context for having this analysis done. I mean, I would like to see us have a selectmen's meeting where we actually have Sam and advisory come in and say, here's, here's what this thing's gonna cost, here's how it fits into the budget, here's how it affects the balance sheet and cash flow and interest payments for the town. We think it's gonna work, you know, that's really what I, you know, I don't think it's our job to figure this out, I think we need, but but I'd like to see that conversation happen, and I'm not sure, you know, I I, we had it briefly, but we really didn't have a a a, an in-depth discussion about that.
Absolutely, um, I'll get, Sam, you wanna say something?
Well, yeah, I just, one other item that disturbed me when it sort of came down to, uh, coming down to town meeting is that the selectmen had set a funding level. And what was starting to happen in the building committee was that they were taking things out of the building that they should not have, trying to get that down to that level.
Make that number.
I mean, you were stripping out a, a full ice and water shield treatment of the roof, which I think is a stupid thing to do in the environment we live in.
We, I don't wanna cut you off, but I don't also wanna really, I totally get it, and that is exactly the conversation, that's why we, I wanna leave it as reasonable and prudent, and what happened, and the reason we came up with that number was the timing. We were forced into coming up with a number, right?
We don't have to make any excuses.
I'm not, I'm just saying.
Maybe we should sit down and figure out what we think we can afford, and that may drive what we do.
I think we, I think we need to find out what the right do is, and work from there.
Well, Sam's, Sam's got a point, however. If what we can afford is, for the sake of argument, after an analysis of our expected needs and funding capabilities and so on, if what we can afford is a nine million dollar expenditure, but it has to take place over eight years.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that changes the nature of the project. And it's, and and it changes the nature of it, because it it then determines that we're going to have to move in phase. You can't, you're not gonna be able to swallow it all at once. If, on the other hand, um, the the committee and advisories come back and with an analysis that says, look, from a budgetary standpoint, if you can, if if you can convince the town that the project that you're going to do, uh, at nine million dollars is worth funding, half on excluded debt, and half out of, uh, immediate funding from sta- the stabilization fund, the the capital stabilization fund, um, out of operational debt, which, which, for which we will have room because of retiring debt on the operational balance sheet, then that may allow us to expedite the project, but also define, uh, you know, have more of a, uh, more of a wish list than not. It's a bit of a chicken and egg.
Yeah.
Alright?
Yep, that's.
But having, having said that, we started last, last time without the chicken or the egg, we were onto the omelet. Okay, and 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 that, and that was the problem, we, you know?
Right, the the one thing I, the one thing I will say is, it's, we're not starting from scratch either, so.
No.
So to your point, we, it is chicken and egg, but we do have the chicken and the egg kind of in the same room.
We've got the objectives, we've got the objectives, we know, we know what we eventually wanna achieve out of the project. And I think, uh, you know, it's, you know, we we ought to listen, Jack made the point earlier, some of this is out of our realm to tackle, we have everything from liquor licenses to affordable housing to deal with.
Yep.
We're asking an open-ended question with respect to affordability, because it comes up under one of our objectives, which was really, it's gotta be affordable.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So I think, I think it's it's reasonable at this point to ask for an assessment of affordability based upon some of the information that we've already received from from previous projects and studies, the options that exist, uh, from full historic restoration on one side to an entirely new building on the other,
Mm-hmm.
to something in between.
Mm-hmm.
Fix it up now, build it out, um, build it out in phases. Those are two very different approaches, and there are any number of them in between. Let's ask the question. Within, within our capital structure, within our capital budget, within our, our expectations for budget, what can we afford?
You're good, you're good.
So, so I, I just, I a- I I agree with what you both said. There are two ways to do this, one way is to have capital budget and advisory analyze our forecast and say, alright, we can afford, for example, a million dollars a year in principal and interest payments for this kind of a project, because of debt roll-off and some other things, right? That gives us, that gives us, that's one way of doing it, I'm not advocating that, you know, that is one way of doing it. The other way of doing it is picking one of these projects, putting a price tag on it, and then figuring out what the financing is for and see if it fits. You could do both, you know, but and we'll iterate down into some kind of a financial solution for that.
Yeah, Kevin?
So I think we're doing a good job of discussing this at our level, and this is what we should be, and we did last time too. But the concern becomes, or the problem becomes, is once it gets down to voting on this, you know, the ro- rubber hits the road, we ran into a problem, and so, so I think we should maybe think down at that level before we get there. And one of the primary concerns of citizens when they came to voting on this was they were concerned about the impact this would have on their taxes. So I would think that it would behoove us to think about, as one of our criteria when we do this, that we're gonna do this project, and let's put this, let's put the suspenders on, let's put the controls on ourselves in a way that will resonate with the population, and essentially, maybe say, the goal, one of our goals will be that whatever the project is, it's gonna have a net zero impact on the level of your taxes, you know, over the next five or ten years, or whatever it is, and if we can put, that's a constraint, but if we put that constraint in there, I think we're gonna have a much higher probability of getting this thing passed without the big objections that we had last time, and, uh, it's, it's, it's strict, but this community's gonna demand that kind of strictness, and so I think that would resonate with the community, I think it would mean a lot to people, that we brought them a proposal, and we could stay upfront, and we merchandised as we were doing it, we're not gonna impact your taxes over the next five or ten years at all, and then get it done. Now, that's creative, that's tough work, but I think we can do it.
See, I, 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 I don't know that that's possible to say, because I had this, this discussion with somebody, and we had that beautiful orange chart that I was sending people for my son's college graduation, um, that voting day, because it had a net, the the debt exclusion that we put forth had, I mean, you get taxed based on the town's budget, right? So that's always gonna, like, how do you actually make that?
So there's, there's debts rolling off the town's balance?
Right, and so net.
So what that does, you you make, on the income statement, we made principal and interest payments, those are going away.
Right. Right.
So there's room in there, there's, you know, we've always planned for this roll-off.
Right.
And what Kevin's saying is, we gotta make, gen- I I'm gonna speak for you, I think it's a brilliant idea, I love it to death. Kevin's saying, fit it into the roll-off.
And it will get through, it will get through the community that way, I think.
Right.
If, 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 I mean, okay, I don't disagree, except that is a really difficult thing for people to grasp, because the other side of that is, my debt's rolling off, this was a debt exclusion from X number of years ago, I was supposed to get that money, you know what I mean, like?
But it's not the roll-off, it's not from excluded debt, it's, it's coming from operation, for, for what it's worth.
Right.
Every single person in this room does it in their household.
Yep.
Right?
Yes, of course.
It's, I, oh my god, thank god, I just paid off that credit card.
Now I can do this.
Oh my god, I got six hundred bucks a month, now I spend.
Right, right.
The interesting part about that, though, though, is Kevin, is that while we can say it, and it's a, it it, from a, uh, uh, promotional idea to the, to the, um, citizens, it's a, it it is, it is brilliant.
Makes sense.
In, in truth, we're not giving them net zero, because if we didn't spend the money, then the taxes, that that the basis for tax rates wouldn't be as, a- at that maintained level.
But we've never dropped tax rates historically, I I don't think ever in this town.
I, I.
Thank you for articulating what I'm saying.
Are we gonna drop, are we gonna drop tax rates?
I would hope so, because if we keep.
It would be taxes that we, we would have to pay, but what we're saying, though, is that we're not gonna increase you from where you are now.
No, no, well, we are, two and a half percent per year, we've never not gone there.
At least.
No, 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 so that's what's gonna happen, but I mean, this whole project is not gonna, this is, no, this whole project is not gonna take imbalance, the status call of the way people are paying their taxes in the community. And we should, if we constrict, if we, if we confine ourselves, and then we get real creative, and we get the state fin- it'll force us to get the state funding, that's a home run, this community will buy that, and they'll, and and they'll, and they'll take it. And if, but if we don't, one thing I've learned, this is our third time at the bat, but I really learned it this spring, is you're gonna get a deep re- uh, reaction from the community, people who don't speak up, people who aren't coming here, but they're listening, they're watching tonight, and they, they talk a lot more when it gets closer. So if you address that issue, and and you, and you can, and you can say that to the citizens, they're not gonna pay more in taxes, and you're gonna get this, that's a tough job, but will have done a great job worthy of a great board.
It's been.
And that'll both help.
I think it's a great goal, and I I'll just tell you from, you know, I I have a good sense of what the roll-off looks like, and I actually think we can pull it off.
I do too.
Sam, can I let Sam speak?
Well, I have two things.
Good thing.
Um, one, in about three years, capital stabilization fund starts to get some major increases in input due to the debt roll-off. Um, the second item I had, and I thought of this after the vote went, went down, uh, last spring. You know, if we had bundled the school roofs together and done them all at once, and asked for excluded debt, that'd be a piece of cake.
Yep.
That would've been voted through.
And and this is.
So why don't we do the school roofs with town hall, just like Congress?
So, if we take our ten-year capital plan, and we start to massage it a little bit on how we might fund some of these things, we may find, you know, the school roofs in it were roughly three and a half mil, um, it's probably gonna be up to four, four and a half mil, uh.
Right.
Is.
Well, so Diane, it's there.
But we need this exercise, we need this exercise, right?
I know, I know, I know.
But if, if we start thinking about that, maybe we fund town hall out of operational debt versus excluded debt, and save the excluded debt for something that's more likely to pass.
Absolutely.
So ba- it's back to, Kevin's, Kevin's, um, point is, in a vacuum, that is to say, simply looking at it as cost.
Yep.
Um, presenting that to the town and say, look, this isn't gonna cost you incrementally more.
Correct.
Right, is a, a, um, a worthy promise to make to taxpayers.
It's an aspiration, though, I disagree.
Well, it's aspirational.
I, I think you're spinning it hard.
I think it's an aspirational goal.
I think even being aspirational, I think, I think.
Let, let Steve finish. Can I have Steve finish?
Let me finish.
And then we'll keep moving.
I think it's a, it's a worthy goal, and it's worthy to try and achieve it. The second piece of this, however, is no matter how worthy that goal, if we don't, if we can't show the town that there is a value to the expense, we'll still get voted down. Sam's point illustrates that. Sam's point illustrates that, all right, why will school rules pass, pass? This town has historically, even after bloody fights, supported the, the school district above all. At least in part, because it's a, it, it does help to support the tax base broadly, helps to support home values broadly, and your kids go there. All right?
So can I have?
When it, so the final piece of that, then, is we, we have to make.
I'm like, Kevin's speak. Kevin's picture.
Uh, beyond just the price, uh, but just, just beyond the, the payment system, we do have to make an argument for value of the project, whatever that price tag comes to be. That's all, that was my point.
I agree with you, I challenge the board, though, to not even make it aspirational, I think, I, I, I challenge us to be bolder and stronger, and we should force the issue, uh, to keep this expense so that it has no net, net impact on taxes within the community. And that's a tough order, but we can do that, but I think that that's what this board should do, and it's, it's responsible, tough government. And, uh, it's something we haven't seen, we don't see it hardly anywhere in the federal or the state level, but this community. But this community here, we can do it, and so I think we should make it one of our, one of our objectives, I think it'll be widely popular. It'll make, uh, the people will be very interested in what we're doing from the get-go, and we should force ourselves to do it, we can do this. We can find the revenues elsewhere, we can get creative, we can get other sources, we can get really tough on this, and that's the way to do it for the people.
So two quick things, I wanna take Paul, I'm gonna take Jack, I might say something, then I'll take comments from the audience, you don't have to worry about your hands.
Uh, so, I, I agree with you, Steve, to some extent, but I'm rather honest about the failures of the schools, um, so not always.
No, that was oper- that was operational, we're talking, we're talking about, we're talking about the, the expenditure on, I was talking about the expenditure on construction.
Operational.
Well, the, the, it was a, it was not operational, um, but the other option there also is, I, looking at the debt roll-off, and if we can secure monies from the state, I, I think Kevin's right, I think this can be done, and without raising the overall tax burden. And I think we can potentially do it, using a mixed items of, uh, financing, whether it be capital, we can use some operational, and we can use some state fundings, and, uh, if necessary, to do exclusionary debt, but I, I'm, I, I think it's feasible.
I don't disagree, I, I just, I, I respond to this, I don't disagree with, with Kevin's approach, and let's make sure we're clear on that, I do not disagree with it. However, there's a lot of contingencies in there, so I, I beg each of you to consider that while we want to accomplish this as a goal, let's get the financial input that points out where the risks are, okay? What happens if a future state budget eliminates state funding that we might be able to grasp? And suddenly we have a three million dollar hole, can we fulfill that promise? Will it endanger the overall project? I'm, I'm not suggesting for a moment that, that it's not a worthwhile pursuit. I'm just asking that we recognize that there are a lot of moving parts in it, and while we may adopt it as an objective, if it becomes a, uh, you know, a sword of Damocles to the, uh, to the success of this project, then we can only point to ourselves for having done so.
Jack.
So, I, I understand what Steve's, first of all, I applaud Kevin for the suggestion, I think it's great, it really will focus us and force us to analyze this project in a way we've never done before. I appreciate what Steve's saying, if we got to the end of this and we find out that we, we twisted it eight different ways, and the only way it works is that we have to do a, a small increase in people's taxes to make it happen, and we have a good story for it, and we have a justification for it, so much the better, I mean, I just think it, I, you know, I'm, I think it forces discipline on us and everybody else.
So, I, I'm gonna take comments from the audience, uh, I, I just wanna say, like, I, I'm torn because I so appreciate it, but I, I tend to get way too in the weeds. And I remember having a conversation with somebody and saying, you know, there is a small net impact with this debt exclusion for years one and two, but then the roll-off.
But we're not talking about exclusion, we're talking.
Whatever it might be.
And the roll-off is not excluded debt, our roll-off right now is in the budget, it's cooked into the budget, so it's a different story.
But, but it's the same idea that their, their taxes were gonna be, were net neutral in years three and four with the.
Okay, so, so let's just talk about what happens when the roll-off happens, that money would go towards stabilization funds, it would go, we'd borrow more. We, we would just borrow on something else, is what we would do.
Right, I just want the language to be such that it's not spin, that it's a, it's a, it's something that we can actually live up to. So when we, when we make that happen, because, you know, your taxes are always gonna.
I think we, I think we must do it, and that if we budget out what we have for the money, and then we're gonna plan what we do based on that budget. And if, like Steve said, really, so then it may take four years, five years, six, who knows? I don't think so, though, because I think, I have more confidence in us than I think you do. Or some, I, I think I have a lot of confidence that we're gonna figure out creative ways, now to get the funding. We may, this may cause us to relook at the way we, uh, expend our money totally town-wise, is may create the kind of constraints that governments don't usually have, but we should have it, we, we, we can afford a first-class town hall, I think, and we can figure out creative ways to do it, it's, it's too easy to sit here on boards like this and say, well, let's spend this money, let's do this, let's. I say, no, let's not do that, let's set restraints and go to work, and keep it, keep, keep the budget below, I'm absolutely convinced we can do it.
Kevin, would you, would you, I, I, actually, I'll ask the entire board, would you be willing to set that as a controlling factor over expense?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in.
Yes, right.
Like, as a controlling factor over expense, if, if our, uh, if our defining objective is a net neutral tax impact to the taxpayer.
It's a man, I think it's a mandate.
No, 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 what, what I'm driving at here is, if that's the controlling factor, then it could take eight years, it could take longer, it could take less. But the controlling factor is whether you can keep it net neutral, and within the construct of that ten-year capital.
And every time you bring that to the people, they'll vote for that, I believe, they'll vote for that. That'll, that'll eliminate, you know, a good forty percent of the people who didn't vote for it before. It'll be strongly supported, because the community will respect what we do, what we did, because we're gonna be sweating to do that, we're gonna work hard at it, and we're gonna get it done, and we should have those kinds of constraints on government spending, it's durable.
Well, where, 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 where that goes, and as a practical matter, as I brought up a little earlier, all right? My concern is you go out and say, let's go with, go ahead with this plan, and all of a sudden, a funding resource doesn't, uh, doesn't exist any longer.
We deal with that.
Well, no, no, you're, this is, as a controlling factor, you adjust the plan.
Right.
And as long as, as long as that becomes the controlling factor, you're right, you're disciplined, you work your ass off to get to, to make sure that, that additional and outside funding is available, and if it isn't, then we adjust the delivery.
And it'll change, it'll change our behavior, Steve, because then with that criteria, we're not gonna make commitments for two million dollars, this would, this would, Don Schu, we're gonna get it.
Yeah, okay.
So that'll change our behavior, and it won't be, well, gee, I guess the governor said we could have this fund, and we'll just do it, no! Because with this kind of constraint on ourselves, which we should do, as mature, rational, responsible government officials, we won't get ourselves into the, uh, 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 into commitments that we can't afford. This'll be totally controlled and managed, and people have a lot of confidence in what we're doing, trust me, they'll vote for it.
I, I'm gonna ask for comments from the audience, can I move on, and then we'll wrap up?
I, I actually was gonna, I was gonna make a motion, in, in which case the comment could come from the audience following that, if you like.
Sure.
Um, I move that the budget for town hall be reasonable, prudent, consistent within a ten-year capital plan, and be governed by the town's ability to fund such construction with a net neutral tax impact on the, on the residents of the town.
You're gonna, you're gonna get a bill, then.
Second.
And be governed by the.
Just the way you said it.
By, by net neutral tax impact on the residents of the town.
I love it. Now, that's different, we'll get that done.
Yeah.
Okay, Sam.
Well, dude, no, we didn't vote on it.
Yeah.
No, it was comment.
I, I know.
We got a, we got a motion in a second.
No, it's a comment from the boards.
We can't take comment?
No, not motion.
Motion in a second, no.
Oh.
You can, you can take back my second.
No.
Can't take comments, it'll be comments on the board itself, those are the rules. You can draw it, you can draw it, then you can comment.
I didn't wanna comment on that.
He didn't wanna comment on it, so let's, let's vote.
Hold on.
Is everybody okay with voting on it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, it matters here.
It's our board, so.
Yeah. No, I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the motion.
And, and just because I'm neurotic about words, not about the, the sentiment, I'm a hundred percent behind this, but I just wanna make sure, I'm looking at Chris, like, what we mean by tax impact is that this project in and of itself is not going to add any additional tax burden.
My verbiage is intended to mean that it will not cause a debt exclusion.
Mm-hmm.
That it would not direct a, 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 an increase in the tax rate for the purposes of covering the budgeted cost of either construction, principal and interest payments, or any other servicing of the project.
Okay.
But if it's a debt exclusion, that you've got a roll-off of the debt exclusion and replaces it.
No, but you don't do that, the debt exclusion comes off as a matter of course, it's, it's the budget, it's the debt that's in the budget itself.
So the total, you're talking about the total tax bill percent, uh.
My, my, by, by, by tax impact, I'm, I, if, if you're total.
Sorry.
If you, as a resident, have a total tax burden currently attached to the property you own of, what's the median?
Seven fifty-fourty-eight.
Sorry?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand dollars per year?
Oh, yeah, it's, no, it's, ninety-six hundred.
That this project will not cause any acceleration outside of the normal increases, normal budgetary increases.
They have a net neutral impact on the budget, so that's the way it's taxes.
Two and a half, two and a half increases will be incorporated.
No, yeah.
Potentially could, could fund that.
Yeah, but the two and a half, if, 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 for example, we on a given, uh, the board on a given year voted for a two-point-four-five increase, there still would be a tax impact on.
So you're incorporating that into the, the usual customary expansion of the tax.
Yeah, at this point, no, we've been fortunate, at this point, we have been turning back to the town a substantial amount of money for now the last five years, I believe it's been. Um, some of that is, is kismet, right, we're in a great position, we're gonna want it.
But you're, but you're not, so.
All right, but.
In the future, in the future.
Can I call the vote?
Uh, well, as soon as they finish, in the future, um, the, the point, the, the, the point of this is to codify the original proposal by Kevin, which is that there is, there is not intended to be, not, there will not, we will not allow a net tax increase in order to pay for this project.
I call the question, can I do that?
Yeah.
As the chair?
Yep.
Hey, but you got, you got a vote on for calling the questions, closing today.
All those in favor of the motion presented by Steve, seconded by Jack, please say aye. Aye, any nays, nope, unanimous, okay?
Can I give, can I add a piece to this conversation?
Please.
So, in, in this aspirational goal, um, so there's been a lot of.
Not aspirational, this is done.
So, so, okay, so, so in this, in this, in this vein, has that, okay, in this vein, a productive, positive progress. Uh, there's been an ongoing conversation about, uh, with this project, uh, about finding, uh, an environmentally and economical way to heat and cooling, uh, whether it be geothermal or other energy efficiency aspects. A member of the Capital Budget Committee, Brian Hostess, that a lot of research, um, we, we've had some conversations entirely. Um, there's an opportunity that's presented itself for a, 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 a group at UMass, uh, UMass Amherst, it's, it's a center that does alternative energy assessments, it's students, it's a professor, to adopt this as a class project, so the class would do an assessment of the buildings, um, in- including a lot of permutations, you know, you know, repair, reconstruct, uh, new building, et cetera. The historical piece, the extension, uh, geothermal, insulation, building up, well, the whole big aspect that would cost us a lot to, to assess. They would do it as a class project. Um, and, um, so Brian confirmed today that, that was, we had a meeting today, I said, it's a great concept, can we, can they, can they do it? He's, and he confirmed that they would be willing and excited to do it, there's still some logistics to getting the students here and all that. Um, but it sounds like something that's a great opportunity, would take this semester, um, and we, we'd hopefully have some, some information by spring. Uh, but I think it would dovetail nicely into the conversation that already happened, and, um, so I, I'm just looking for the board to give me a, either a thumbs up or a, or some sense that that's a good idea, 'cause I gotta sign, we gotta commit to that, um, and, uh, it's, it's great.
Hang on, Paul, tell Paul raise his hand, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, I think that's a very good, um, good option, um, I look also at geothermal, um.
Well, this is part of geothermal building, so.
Which, which is clearly, um, from my understanding, from, from the engineering process, um, come out is, is key for this sort of, uh, engineering, because the, uh, bedrock is firm and easily to be done, um, there's a firming Medford, uh, that I talked to, um, that does this exactly. And I think that sort of, uh, group that could look at options, look at geothermal, solar, um, all of that.
And, and, and just, you know, energy efficiency opportunities that could make the building a really economical and environmentally friendly at the same time. It's, it's a, a classic one, so, but it's, I, I think Brian, all the work he did, he'll be working with our Green Communities representative at, uh, the state and.
Attorney Bob Ryan, uh.
Host.
I said, I may, 'cause I was at that meeting, he, he was principally concerned about this being a geothermal thing, 'cause I was thinking of you all the time, you know. So he's very much, this proposal is very much aimed at threshing out doing geothermal.
Jack, did you wanna say something?
I just wanna say that I was in the same conversation with Kevin, and the way this would impact the project is, it seems like there'll be substantial reductions in the cost of heating and cooling the buildings, and that, that.
In the long term.
So that frees up more cash flow, you know, and it frees up cash flow on the operating budget, and it's, you know, again.
Out.
Getting towards our goal of net neutral impact of the new town hall. So, and it seems like the technology's pretty well-developed and easy to do.
So, I, I, we could talk about this, hang on Fran, I'll get to you, it, for like, ever and ever and ever, I, I think the board says go ahead with this. Um, I just wanna say that at our meeting in, um, our first meeting in January, we'll, we'll continue to have this and have some meeting, needy discussions, 'cause we gotta accelerate the conversations. I, I don't wanna cut any conversation off, but we are running really late tonight.
I, I just needed, so if they're gonna make it a project for the next semester, anything.
Go for it.
Yeah, so.
So I just wanna, and then I'll, then I'll take any comments from the audience, but two other quick things that I want to get the board's quick input on, and it, we may not be able to make a decision tonight, but we still have a town hall building committee structure in place, I believe it, was the committee sunsetting, I don't think so, so we have it, um, there are people on it, but there are probably people that wanna come off of it, and we will need new members, so, um, Fran, we'll have the floor in a minute, I, I'd love your input on this. But I do think we're gonna be also looking for new members for the town hall building committee, and we're gonna need people that, with some relevant, you know, construction development experience and some finance experience that could be part of this conversation, yes.
Can I make a suggestion to help you? Is that we're doing a two-step process that we put out there that, uh, and let it be known that those that are existing on the committee who wanna reapply, you know, reapply however you wanna do it, and then set a date, and then we'll consider their application, you know, for those that wanna reapply, so there may be two, three, four, whatever it is. Then those, that's set, and then go off for another round of new applications for anybody who wants to come aboard.
So I think their terms are still in place, so I don't know that a reapplication, I would recommend a reapplication. Let's say Frank Collins wants to stay on, he's been appointed through, I don't know what the date is, but it's, could be twenty-twenty. He should just let us know that he was interested in remaining, and somebody that does not wanna stay on can, can take that time.
And let's find out that first.
And then we'll assess that at our first meeting, and then see what holes we have. The other thing I want the board to consider, and we can discuss this in more detail at our next meeting, is to have a second committee that is working on, um, and, and it could be in any form, but one of the things we talked about the last time was setting up, uh, like a friends of old town hall. So a, a group that could talk about programming and uses for the building, um, and perhaps become a, like a fiscal agent for any kind of private funding support that we might get, so I, I just want you to think about, that's what they did in Sandwich, when they did the historic town hall, and you, and the.
They did in Chatham for the theater.
And it stayed in place so that people helped, you know, with the operational needs of the building, of the built, the auditorium, which is used for, you know, movie nights and performances and stuff, so think about the wisdom of doing that and doing that now, so that they can literally be having conversations, because what we might find is that we don't need to do X, Y, and Z in the auditorium, because this group is able to find a funding source to, to do the lights, or the TV studio, or whatever might come out of that, so. Um, so think about that, okay, Mr. Collins.
Ladies and gentlemen.
You have two minutes.
Um, it, we, you know, we talked about the geo- geothermal, um, have a sec.
It, we, you know, we talked about the geo, geothermal, um, having, as close to a net zero energy impact on the building as we could way back in the very beginning of this last, most recent project we're in, and it's a spectacular idea. I'm glad Brian did some more digging, come up with it. Just, I want to just caution that there's a pretty big upfront cost. When's the payoff? How long is the payoff? It could be three years, it could be ten years, I don't know, but, but ultimately, ultimately, the savings will certainly be there. The other comment I wanted to make tonight, you, maybe I misunderstood, but you were talking about doing this project incrementally. That's, to me, that's just wasting money, spinning your wheels, 'cause it's gonna cost a heck of a lot more. A quick silly analogy, but I always had a, a big, major piece of machinery on a ship here several years ago, when I would just go take it back, rebuild it, make it like new, and, and the, and the, the, the parts were twice the cost of buying a new piece of equipment, and this would be having here. So it, it, it didn't make sense. We'd only buy incremental bits and pieces to put the, see, and get the, the major structure of the machinery was still there, but because we were buying it bits and pieces, it cost us a lot. And it would be the same. If we want to do the, the old town hall as a standalone, and then provide proper administrative and, and meeting spaces in, in the new or the refurbished, or whatever you do with this building, town hall, I can see that as, as a two-part operation, but, but try to do this over a period of time. It's, and maybe I misunderstood what you said, but I would say, don't, don't even think of it.
I, I can assure you that's not what I want to do. I think that, I think ultimately, we all would probably, what, what we want is a project that meets the goals that we have set forward, including the net neutral tax thing, and to get it done as swiftly and prudently and efficiently as possible, 'cause those.
I'm just commenting on the fact that you want to do it bits and pieces, that's.
I don't.
I'm with you.
Um, but we're gonna have to, and, and that's gonna force us to be all the more creative of how do we just do this project that we all know needs to get done, and do it as, as fiscally responsibly, and, and have the right building, have the right outcome, um, for us. So, any other comments? Rich?
So I have three quick comments. Um, the first is about the idea about the net impact on the, on the taxes. I think the first priority should be to make sure that we get the best balance of service and cost that's possible. I think, I think that's really the key, rather than, you know, setting an artificial number or ceiling. I think we need the best project that we can get, and, and that means cost-effective also. It's not, I'm not saying the cost doesn't matter at all, but there's a balance, and we, we don't have a good building now. The town would really benefit from a good building, so, um, I would say that. My second point is the excluded debt. From what I recall, there's a substantial roll-off on the excluded debt on, on property taxes coming very soon, um, and that accelerates quickly. It, it seemed like that was really our best option for financing the, the last project last year, um, and it, it seemed, it seemed, it seemed to me to be a good plan, um, that didn't tie up the town too much. And it would, I would be concerned if you use the operational debt for a project this size, that the budget would be hamstrung down the road. And my, my last comment was, um, on something we, we talked about last week, and that was about the possibility of the private group, um, leasing, the town leasing out to the private group, um, like the, like, like the light keeper situation. I, I've thought more about that, and the more I think about it, the less I like it. I didn't like it very much when I heard it, um. And the, the thing that came to mind is when, when we had the Our World situation. It took quite a while to, you know, straighten out, um. I can only imagine if, if the group that took over the town hall was somehow unable to, um, maintain their obligations. It would be, this would be a real nightmare. So I, I know that you, I know that you are interested in working with partners, and I think that's great. You know, I think the Dramatic Club right now is a partner in the town hall, it seems like, um, and I don't see a problem with that going forward.
I think we're a meeting or two away from really kind of having a, a different scope of what's this project gonna look like. I happen personally to be a hundred percent with you on that. I, you know, I hope we can find a project like we presented last spring, which I always have to say did pass town meeting, that financing was the issue at the ballot. I hope we can find something like that, maybe cut it down a little bit to, to meet the, the financial, um, you know, planning that we need to do and constraints that we, we've put ourselves. So, um, I think we'll have a much more substantive conversation about the project, um, probably in, you know, probably not the next meeting, but probably the meeting after that. Stay tuned, we got a lot to cover. Sam, we're gonna give you the last word, and then we're gonna wrap, 'cause we have the executive session. Go ahead.
I just have a question. Actually, you voted on, um, the historical restoration of the auditorium for cultural civic community usage. Did you mean just?
The building.
The building in total?
Yes.
And not use it at all for town offices?
No.
Or did you mean just the tr, first floor? Or a partial use, a mixed use?
Utilization.
You, you didn't really specify it one way or the other.
Very good point.
Structure of utilization of the historic auditorium.
It says auditorium in the, yeah.
And the restoration.
I know, you said auditorium, but did you mean that you might have some town office and civic use?
See, we haven't discussed that, yeah.
No town office.
I mean, I think at this point, we're open to anything, right?
I think it was an open comment, if I recall, I mean. So it could be open to anything.
It's, it's.
'Cause I think that's a critical issue in moving forward.
It absolutely is. I wish that that motion were more clear, to be honest with you, but.
If you, if I, you talking about the auditorium, Sam?
No, I'm, I'm talking about old town hall.
But that's not a motion.
Yeah, that wasn't a motion, so if you're talking about the second floor.
Okay, you were talking just about the auditorium.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Got it, because that's what we are able to off, get quite, yes.
Okay, all right.
We're good. Okay, I'm gonna wrap this conversation up. Thank you very much. We do have an executive session, so I want to, um, very quickly.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all so much.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
We have an executive session for number.
Exception number three, to just fester our energy.
Dr. Barkley for litigation if a, hopefully they have dead men on the front of the bargain, which is a public body, and the chair sort of.
I declare.
The board will ratify SEIU library and have SCME U S B contracts.
Um, and, and we will come out of session.
The sole purpose of adjournment.
Is that correct? Or it's the sole purpose of publicly ratifying the SEIU and asked me?
Yes.
Contracts. At that point, that'll be the last agenda item, and then we will adjourn. So, um, I, I will, no, no, we do a roll call vote to go on executive session. Steve?
Aye. Jackie Eylee, aye.
Me. Uh, Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert.
Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Yeah. Sorry, I got thrown off. I usually read these, those motions, so.